This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good. All right. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for August 16th at about a little after 6:30 PM. So if we could stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Good. Well, thanks, everyone. We just, for those who may not have known, we just had a very nice ceremony outside with the flag that flew at the World Trade Center from 9/11. It's making its rounds from Westfield to here and onward to Bernadette Greenfield and parts north. And thank you to John Workman, our fire chief, for helping coordinate that and the escort that was provided for the flag coming up from Westfield. So I'm sure you'll see a photo or two. Robert Floyd was there taking photos, so those of you who missed it will have a chance. So for the moment, let's start in. We have a couple of presentations tonight, but before that, how about some open time for the public?
Good evening. Tammy Alunis, 298 College Highway. On behalf of the Celebrate Southampton and the Historical Society, we'd like to thank everyone that came out on Friday and Saturday. We had spectacular weather, a fabulous turnout, and it was truly a real celebration. We had over 500 in attendance, and it was a great event. It was lovely. So thank you to everybody that came out. We really appreciate it.
Great. And thanks to Tammy and Becky Nimmans and various other people, many other people that were involved in organizing this and putting it together, gathering all those raffle prizes, which I know some of them still need to be collected, but quite a number of raffle prizes that were handed out. And everybody, I think, had a great time. I talked to several people, including the vendors, actually, some of them, and they said, yeah, this was great. It was really worth our while to come, and we really would like to come back again if you do this again. And even the people that were milling around looking for things at the craft fair just said, you know, we've gone to a couple of craft fairs this year, and it's oftentimes the same old, same old stuff. But you guys did a great job. But calling in crafters was something unique and different. So that was great. So congratulations to the crew that put it together. So I think we've got that one behind us. And by the way, I think all the animals were quite a hit as well. I mean, you know, you can't beat the bounce house, but I don't know, that alpaca really won the hearts of many little kids. So.
It was friendly, too.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Okay, very good. Okay, anybody else? If not, is Senator Velez, he may still be out with the crowd. We're going to have the senator first. I don't know if the flag has departed yet. If not, give it a second here.
It's still down there.
Okay. Let's swap order then, if you don't mind. Bridget, Bridget Lively from Kestrel Land Trust is here. And we'll see if we can, if you.
It doesn't work, no worries.
Okay.
Give it a try.
All right.
Okay.
We'll give it a try to see if we can hook it up.
Did you get onto our 5G?
Yeah, I think I'm connected.
Okay. Then just open your browser. And then put in that.
Yes.
Here's Jess.
All right.
There he is.
Long view.
Yeah. Okay. That'll give you time to get that set up. Okay. Good. Well, we'll go back to the original order then. So Senator John Velez, please, we'd love to welcome you to the Southampton Select Board tonight, and much appreciate your making the time to come and have a chat and just give us an update about what's going on in Boston.
That'd be great.
Especially as it pertains to small towns like Southampton.
Absolutely.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming I speak right here?
You certainly do.
All right. Well, first and foremost, thank you. Is there any formal protocol that I follow in terms of nothing? I like very informal. So first, thank you so very much for the invite. I think it's really important to do this as frequently as we can, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention how great of an event that just was with the, with the flag from 9/11. And I think it's really phenomenal that Southampton was able to, able to get that. I mean, a lot of communities are vying for it. From the state end, there's, there's obviously a lot going on. We just finished up what I think by all accounts was just a really blockbuster, just a very contentious blockbuster, lot of different issues towards, towards the end of the session. And as you probably, and I'm assuming that folks aren't following at all, so if I say something that you already know, please excuse me, or just tell me to move on. We have an awful tendency of waiting till the end of the legislative session to get some really, really important stuff done. And it's, you know, I've tried everything in my power as an individual lawmaker to, to really kind of move beyond that. There's certain things that I've come to appreciate are just a product of the institution, and I don't know if that's going to change ever, to be very candid with you. So, mental health, sports betting, soldiers' harm reform, the Speed Act, a transportation bond bill, $275 million for East-West Rail within that. And I think I should spend some time talking about the Economic Development Bill that seems to have gotten a lot of media coverage, a lot of just back and forth. So, so long story short, we passed a bill, both in the Senate and the House, that for all intents and purposes was a, was a mini-budget. It was huge. I mean, it would have gone everything to small towns and communities, rural communities, distressed hospitals, healthcare workers. We passed it. There was a conference committee on this bill. And then the week before session was going to end, Governor Baker kind of came out, and I'm, this is, well, I'll get into that second. Governor Baker brings up this 1986 referendum, but we are kind of all referring to as 62F, which essentially is that if revenues, if revenue exceeds salaries and growth, then that money is to go back to the people in the form of a tax credit. So again, that happened, it was actually five days before, as the Economic Development Bill was, they were close. I mean, it was getting ready to be announced. There was agreement. We were going to send it to the governor. And then this kind of just really disrupted everything. And the reason it disrupted everything is that the position, and I don't want to throw the House under the bus, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna point out my observations was is that the House's persuasion was more that we don't know if we can afford this. We don't know the dollar amount that is going to go back to the people. Everybody's acknowledged that this is a legit thing. Everybody's acknowledged that it's constitutional. We just don't know how many billions of dollars are going to have to go back. And if you recall, in this Economic Development Bill, there was a lot of tax relief in that bill, a lot of updates across the board, a lot of things like, any number of tax updates, but the estate tax we updated, which was long overdue, really across the board, tax relief. And the legislature's position, but more the House of Representatives' position was that we don't know if we can afford this with all of this at once. And, you know, many people, certainly with an economic background that far exceeds mine, would, would point out that we could be on the verge of a recession. So the play, the compromise, the consensus that kind of emerged was that let's wait to see what the auditor comes out with, which is due in September, how much money, in fact, under 62F would go back to the communities, and then we'll make a decision about the Economic Development Bill. What I can tell you, that as recently as today, I spoke to the chairman of Ways and Means on the Senate side, where he assured me that we are still trying to do something in informal sessions. So informal sessions, for those of you that may not be aware, it's where no roll calls happen. So formal sessions in the second of the two-year cycle end July 31st. And we kind of pushed that because it was an all-night, we finished at 10:00 AM on August 1st this past day. So it was a very long, drawn-out process. But where we are now is that informal sessions, anything can pass, any policy initiative can pass, but if there's one senator who objects to it, or one House member who objects to it, the whole thing would stop. So what we're trying to do is develop a consensus if we can get this Echo Dev bill, we all refer to the Economic Development Bill as Echo Dev, out. Because, and this is kind of where I diverge a little bit and find myself a little bit more agreeing with Governor Baker. I do think we have the ability to afford both. I mean, if you look at revenues right now, in many respects, we are in uncharted territory. We've got a $5 billion surplus right now. That's up 21% from last year, very significant revenue. You know, a lot of the gloom and doom predictions that we thought from COVID really didn't come to fruition, right? There was a lot of different industries that were absolutely decimated by COVID, and we've tried in earnest to help that as much as we can, and we'll continue to help them. But many industries and tax revenues never really tapered off. If anything, they've increased. So, so we have been, and if you couple that with a lot of the federal funds, ARPA, the CARES Act, there's a lot of money going out there right now for a lot of different projects. So my belief, and again, this is where kind of there's, there's less uniformity in terms of opinion, is that whether or not we can afford it right now or not, I find myself in the, you know, we've got a very solvent rainy day fund. We've got revenue that exceeds in many respects, you know, on a monthly basis, really anything that we've had. And my persuasion is that we can, in fact, afford to do both. And why I'm so adamant that we can do that, or should do it, I should say, I think we can and should do it, is because I have never, in my entire time as an elected official, I have never been approached by more constituents explaining to me and talking to me about the financial pain that they're going through right now. I mean, it's literally, there is no respite from, you know, going to the grocery store, prices are up. Going to a gas station, prices are up. Going out to eat at a restaurant, prices are up. So if there was ever a time, and this is where I'm speaking for Senator John Velez as opposed to the body, if there was ever a time that we should err on the side of giving money back, let's be honest, to the people whose money it is, taxpayer money, it's right now because we have that revenue to do it. So it's a very, it's a very contentious, that might not be the right word, back and forth right now. There's a lot of back and forth between both chambers. At the risk of getting in front of it, I think the Senate's persuasion is more, we need to do something, and we should do it soon. You know, if it were up to me, and in fact, I'm not saying anything that I didn't say yesterday to the media, I believe that we should be, we should suspend this thing called Rule 12A and gavel back into a formal session until we, until we figure it out. But ultimately, I think what you're going to see happen is some type of package pass, but probably not as significant financially that you would have otherwise seen if, if we didn't, at the last minute, find out about this 62F, 1986, really kind of obscure law that's out there. So, so that's really the big-ticket item right now, because I think that's going to determine so many of the things that we do. I mean, look, there's a lot of, there's a lot of conversations, a lot of issues, and I think, you know, things that we could potentially talk about, right? Whether it's a senior center, a public safety complex, and I'm bringing those two up because constituents just brought them up to me as I was walking over here. I mean, this is all money in play that theoretically we could go after to fund some of that. You know, all of those projects, in my experience, are typically a collaboration, right? There's a local, there's local buy-in, there's state buy-in, and in many instances, also federal buy-in. But I don't know, I'm not an economist, but I don't know how long that money's going to be there for. And a lot of this money is one-time revenue that we need to, you know, we need to go after while we, while we can. I'm trying to think, anything out there? I mean, the Economic Development Bill, I mean, is it appropriate for me to see if anybody has questions? I mean, I don't, I've said a lot, I don't, I don't know how you want me to handle this.
Sure. Yeah. No, I think among the Select Board first, and then certainly if people in the audience have.
Certainly.
Have questions. We have people listening on Channel 191, our public access TV as well, and others maybe listening on YouTube, but unfortunately, they can't really ask you any questions. So we'll have to share the, share the brunt here. If anybody has anything to say.
Well, you mentioned about the two buildings that are important to us, the senior center and the public safety building. We have a lot of old buildings, too. I know that there was a bill that was going to potentially address that. You know, the big thing, too, is roads and schools, you know, Chapter 70, Chapter 90. We, you know, regional transportation is something that we never have seen to the extent that we should have back when we first regionalized. So is there any updates in terms of money for schools? I thought that when we actually did the budget this year, and it was passed by the voters, and then I kept hearing there was going to be increase in this, an increase in that, and it didn't really materialize, at least for our towns. So I'm just curious.
So for the chapter, I mean, so the chapter, so we're talking about the Chapter 70 funding right now?
Yeah.
That I have for a dollar amount for Southampton, $2,593,726. Is that, is that accurate?
Is that what's currently in the budget?
Sounds right.
Somewhere around there.
Okay.
Give or take a dollar.
What's that?
Give or take a dollar, yes.
Yeah.
And then the, and then I have the $738 for the, for the UGA funding for Southampton, $738,118. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So I'm seeing an increase of 5.4% on the UGA, and then a 1.1% increase on the Chapter 70 stuff. Does that sound like?
Yes.
Yeah.
Remind me to thank my staff tomorrow for coming up with good numbers.
I take.
Yeah. So, look, that's a, that's a constant, I mean, the Chapter 70 stuff, I mean, we have this debate. There is not a community in Massachusetts that does not, could not do much more than what we're giving them right now. And I, and I guess really on that one, it's just constantly, well, a couple of things. It's fully funding, always fully funding, the Student Opportunity Act, right? Which is, which is a big deal. And we did do that this time around. But it's constantly kind of pounding the table about why we need to do more. It's, it's schools and roads.
Yeah. And our contract for regional transportation, I mean, we just signed, what is it, three-year? I mean, the increase was what percent?
It's going to end up being 20%.
Yeah, for our, for busing. I mean, that's crazy. I mean, there's no.
Tell me how that works. How does that, what does that look like? I mean.
It's a three-year, well, speaking as myself and the body here.
I'm going to show Mike. Can I steal a pen from somebody? I left it in the.
I don't want to take your pens.
Well, you got plenty of pens. Go ahead. Yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Of course, I left it in the car because the other, okay, sorry.
No, so we're part of the Hampshire Regional, right?
Yeah.
So five, or four towns contribute to the same bid, but there's only, there is always only a single bid. The busing, public busing is monopoly in the state. Fine, whatever. They came back and offered us a five-year contract, 20% upfront. So we dropped that. We ended up settling for a three-year contract with a 10% upfront, and then a five and a five in year two and three. But as you know, we're restricted to 2.5% increases. So it means right off the bat for the next three years, we have to find this money from somewhere else in our budgets.
How much is that going to be?
Our item, right, is it 3.25 or 5.25 for regional busing?
Oh, good. I can go take a quick look.
But I mean, right now, regional transportation, I mean, I think.
And I got the budget.
Is that the reimbursement at the state, 80% right now? I mean, that's actually good compared to what it usually is.
But reimbursement for us is just at the high school, right? It doesn't reimburse us here at Norris.
Right.
Yeah.
So what would, yeah, you're gonna.
John said he had it.
Yeah, I just got to pull it up.
I'm just trying to figure out the increase in Chapter 70. What did you say we were getting in this next? 1. something. 1.1 or?
I have it as a, I have $2,593,726. I have FY '22, $2,564,926, so an increase of 1.1%.
That's, yeah, it's a negligible increase.
100%, absolutely. Absolutely. That's the one that I want, because the, the UGA funding is 5.4, and the 1.1 is definitely something that I want to, that I definitely want to do. I want to get back to it. But let me just, I want to figure, I want to see if there's, when this dollar amount comes back. I want to know if there's something on the regional.
Okay.
I'm working on it.
Well, take your, take your time. And it's, you said it was a 20% increase?
Over the three-year contract.
Over the three-year, yeah. And plus, they were, they're, it's basically a monopoly. They were the only.
Well, that is also driven by, gas or diesel prices are way up, and those vendors are looking at that. And also, we're just coming through COVID-19 where you couldn't get any help. And we all know that they actually had to bring in National Guard members.
Right.
To drive the buses. You can't find people to drive. So now they're paying $1,500, $2,000 bonuses to people to drive the buses. So it's driving everything, you know, geometrically.
I think it was around 5.4, no? John, is that what I'm finding?
So our, the budget for local school transportation is $311,000. And then.
And that's?
That's, that's local. So that's just for the elementary.
That's just Norris.
And then another $68,000 for vocational.
Now, is that, is that annually? Or is that over the, okay.
So we're 311, and we're roughly 20, no, we're, we're, on the elementary side, we're about 50, 50% of the budget. So all the towns collectively, it's about $650,000.
Okay.
But because of our population, we usually pay 51%.
Of, okay.
Of whatever the.
51%, you said?
Sort of rolling three-year average.
What is your thoughts? And I mean, how, how would you, I mean, what's the thought process right now, how you'd get that money?
Well, luckily, luckily for us, Boston ended up doing the, the reallocation for student enrollment drop-off that came up, and Southampton benefited from that.
Okay.
So we got a one-time deposit of $173,000, or $137,000. That is basically rainy day money for the schools. So a portion's going to go to this.
Okay.
To offset it, so we don't have to go back to the taxpayers to ask for it.
It's just one year, though?
Correct. Yeah.
Just one time thing. Yep.
That was a big, I mean, not to belabor that point, but we all knew that drop in enrollment could be a temporary thing, and we knew it wasn't an accurate reflection of what those numbers really were. So I thought that was actually a really good example of good policy.
No, and for, and for us, that was good on our side, because we didn't know that money was coming, but we had already made the commitment that we were going to ride through the storm. We didn't issue pink slips. We didn't lay anybody off. We didn't reduce staff in the schools. So then to have it come back in the end, that helped us offset all the mitigation that we had to do for COVID, in addition to the ARPA code.
So we have, it's weird, because of the Economic Development Bill that is now in conference committee, we had $2.6 billion left of ARPA money. And about half of that was part of this Economic Development Bill. So regardless, irrespective, I should say, of what happens with economic development, we still have 1. whatever billion of ARPA money. So if it's something collectively folks want me to do, I can put in for some, and again, these earmarks are not long-term solutions. But, but if it's something that, if it's, if you tell me to chase that money as a one-time revenue, and even if it's not a one-time revenue, even if I can go back and get some more money, I always tell people to treat it as one-time revenue for planning purposes, is, is going after some ARPA money for that cause something that folks would want me to do.
Yeah. Seems like that would be a good, good use of, of time to try and do some of that, yeah.
And just to be clear, I'm, it's, you know, somehow or other, we've kind of transferred this to now I'm asking you folks questions. We kind of reversed the roles here. But, but I, but I think that's as important, right? I think me hearing from you is as important. So, so what I will tell you is ARPA is going to be coming up sooner rather than later. And, you know, you folks, and I certainly don't anticipate you answering me tonight right now, but I certainly want to do something in that dollar range for Southampton. So, so have your conversations, and then let me know what you want it to be. And this is going to be my plug for what we're doing right now, we should do more frequently. Because I think I should be here more and hearing on a, on a pretty frequent basis.
Hearing some of the issues, yeah.
What it is, what it is that you folks, you know, the, the challenges, et cetera. I mean, obviously, you can always reach out to me, email me, whatever, call me, whatever. But I just think this is better.
Yeah.
In person.
No, absolutely, yeah.
So, so one of the, one of the, one of the do-outs for me, if you will, is ARPA and Southampton. Whatever you folks tell me, but that sounds like a really good utilization of that money.
John?
John, what's your feelings on the, I think a year ago or so, the state auditor issued that report specifically on the Western communities? And do you think there's any chance of using some of these one-time monies to try and fund some of these things?
I do.
Because one of them would be the public safety complex.
I do.
Or public buildings, even saving some of them. And how would, like, how would we as a Select Board go forward in advocating to try and get that and move forward and get Boston to?
I think you're doing it right now. I think you're doing it to me. So a couple of things, right? The auditor's on her way out. We're going to have a new auditor. And I'm not going to go into politics, but particularly if there's a, there's an auditor who, who has raised that issue over and over again, the Western Mass kind of being left out of the fray, and they've, and they've made it part of, actually, either one of, the next auditor, both of them have expressed an opinion of implementing that, coming up with a funding stream for that. And that auditor bump's report had a profound impact on the Western Mass delegation when it was a, see, we haven't just been making this up all these years, you know, here's the auditor, not from Western Massachusetts, coming out and saying this. So the, the answer is yes, but the revenue stream, I think at this point in time, is yet to be determined. But I do think ARPA could be the vehicle again. And I think, I think what's happening right now is that ARPA, certainly on the Senate side with our leadership, is that there's a, there's, there's kind of a looking at all of these different reports that are out there. And the auditor issues a lot of reports, but this one is particularly scathing. And it's, there's a realization that we need to fund more of the stuff. And look, I'll be very, I'll be very honest with you. You know, for example, the $275 million that was just part of the transportation bond bill for the East-West Rail. I think there's any number of good things that come from East-West Rail, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say that there's also not a lot of other things that are really, really important. We're talking about them. You know, like, look, it's, for me, and I've said this any number of times, big supporter of it, but, you know, roads, bridges, schools, and stuff like that, to me is, you know, that's kind of falls into that, you know, what do you, what do you want versus what do you need? You know, we need roads and bridges and schooling and stuff like that. So yes, yet to be determined on the funding source, but I think it will be ARPA. And absolutely, I think you'll see that for the very, for the very specific reason that both candidates have said they're going to use that as a template. And, and kind of what I can tell you is that many of us in our conversations with the candidates have pointed to that document and said, look what the current holder of this office has said. We're going to be looking for funding based on that. And both of them have said, absolutely. Absolutely. So that's, that's a great question, because yeah, that was a, that was tough reading, that report, in any number of ways.
It was very enlightening, though. It was right on, right on target, I think.
She did a great, she did a great job. She did a great job.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, tying, tying into infrastructure, has the, the infrastructure bill passed at the federal level? Has that made its way really to the state's level?
That's a great question. I have a, I have a meeting tomorrow with Congressman Neal's office, and that's literally the first thing on my agenda. I've got a lot of, here being, here being one of them, infrastructure needs. And, and that, it's kind of in that unknown, like bureaucracy of, okay, you passed it.
Right.
But when are we going to start seeing, when are we going to start seeing this money?
We hear it kind of at a, you know, promoted on various, various ways.
When are we going to show me the money?
You know, we've already given you this infrastructure money. It's like, well, where? We haven't heard about it.
Do you know, so would it be helpful if, if one of the follow-ups for me is that the funding that's out there as part of this infrastructure stuff, like, this is how you go about attempting to?
Any of that would be great. As you know, we've, we've got our ad hoc grant committee that we've set up here in town, and we've been working on various grants. And you and your office have been a great support, writing letters of support for us on a couple of things, like related to the Greenway, for example. But there's, you know, lots of things that we could be doing if we knew exactly what grant was going to be coming available and if we were eligible. I mean, some of them have such crazy restrictions on them in terms of size of population or whatever else. But I mean, there, if there's money out there, I mean, I, I get a little leery, I think, when I, everything keeps falling toward ARPA. And I'm just, I'm just a little scared that we're putting a lot of, a lot of weight on ARPA and not looking elsewhere, too. So.
It's a great point. ARPA's only going to go, ARPA's only going to go so far.
Right. And I know there's other DOT money, you know, from the, you know, from federal transportation and various others. There's other grants out there, but how we, you know, how we know about them and how we can.
Grant's great, but if you don't, if you don't know how to access it.
Exactly.
It's a, it's a.
But we have a dedicated crew here that's working on.
I, I owe you that. I owe you that, that infrastructure, this money, this, it exists. We know it passed. We see it on the news. Everybody's talking about it, but how do our communities access it? I will, I will get you that, I will get you some semblance of an answer.
Okay, that's great.
Yes?
Yeah. I was at another event where someone raised the issue that, you know, with all, all funding and, and support coming from, from the state predominantly is based on population. Well, we're never, Western Massachusetts is never going to match Eastern Massachusetts. Is there any way of, of redoing the formula to, for instance, road miles? We probably have more road miles than they do in the eastern part of the state, and yet we get less money. So maybe not in, in all projects, but in, in some that would equalize the playing field. The other thing that you mentioned, you know, the grants and so forth. Some of these larger towns and cities in the eastern part of the state have enough money to hire, you know, a slew of grant writers. We have a volunteer committee. We will never be able to compete quite the way. Not that, I'm not doubting anybody's abilities here, but we just, we just don't have the resources that they have.
I mean, it's a skill set. Writing a grant is a very challenging, time-consuming, absolutely. So the, the Formula One, that, that's a, that's, that's an issue that, that's tough. I mean, we raise it all the time and it's never gotten any traction. I, I represent a lot of communities that have a lot of mileage, but they don't have the population. And it's a, and the problem that we, and I always tell people this, is that, you know, if you look at the entirety of the Western Mass delegation, House and Senate, we are 8% of the legislative delegation, 8%, not even double digits. So when we raise these issues, I mean, obviously we are in a direct conflict with east of Worcester, who, who wants to protect that money, who wants to, you know, I'll just say this. I mean, we've got, we've got a, you know, we are, we're now rebounding where we've got a lot of people who are advancing. And I'm going to tap myself on the shoulder here right now, you know, advancing in the ranks of their respective bodies. So, so we do have that proverbial, we are getting that proverbial seat in the table. And there's, and look, there's a lot of things politically that are going on right now that could really redound to Western Massachusetts' benefit, that we're going to have access to a lot of, a lot of revenue. And I'm excited about a lot of it. But the Formula One, I don't, I would be remiss if I told you that that's going to be solved like six months from now. I just, I don't, I don't, I don't think it is. Let me ask you a question. How much on a, how much on a, on an annual basis do you find yourself short of what you would need?
100%.
All the time.
100%. All the time, especially when it comes to the highway department.
No, I know, I know all the time about like, by how much like dollar.
Dollar-wise.
Yeah. I know, that was a, if I didn't know the answer to that, I, yes, I wasn't expecting you to say, no, we're good.
I mean, just give us 1% of the sales tax.
Well, you said we're on TV right now. I, I tried that when I was a newly elected rep and I used the whole big dig thing and it was, a lot of people are like, somebody talk to this guy. He's losing his mind. Cause I tried that. I tried that. But you're right, we pay in the sales tax and a lot, a lot of it goes to different, different projects. But, you know, again, the, and, and I, and I talk about this with a certain amount of trepidation because that, this, this 275 million for West-East Rail, East-West Rail, whatever we're calling it, that's going to be real dollars. I mean, that, that's, that's going to happen.
So my experience has been, whether it was on the select board or not as a select board, but as a resident, is that one of the things the town struggles with, and we did a, I think we did a good job as a collective body last year in adjusting, addressing compensation of, of employees who often, the non-collective bargaining agreement, they're the last ones to be addressed and there's no money left, so you just stay the way they are. So we, we took steps to correct all that, but the sacrifices happening is that we have the aging fleet now. That every time we go to replace a highway truck and we're probably three trucks behind in replacing, it's $300,000 and there really is no money for that. We have a plan where X amount of our free cash certification goes into the capital campaign or capital account, but in all honesty, except for this year, it just all goes right back out the door. So, I mean, if we're ever in a pinch where we had to buy a new fire truck, we couldn't find that within our budget. And then our debt ceiling limits on where we are with the bridge construction and all that and home values having to go up, but yet we're underwater restricted, so maybe we shouldn't be building houses. You know, it's what project's going to suffer? And right now, it's, it's the infrastructure of the town that's suffering.
I mean, every budget cycle where it's two months of back and forth, back and forth, praying and hoping that Hampshire Regional doesn't come in at, you know, much more than 2.5% and they've done a great job these past couple of years of moving some things to capital and using E and D money. And then we're always holding our breath around vocational and vocational transportation. You know, this year, a good like 275,000 about went to premium pay for employees and trying to right-size some of the, some of their pay, including buying into the minimum wage and trying to do what we can to hold and get more firefighters since, you know, we obviously need to staff around the clock. It's just always seems like it's painful sometimes. It definitely is. And I think a couple of years, it wasn't this year so much, but when we had tried to do an override, just last year, right? Seems like so long ago, but I'm thinking we were around, wasn't it like 700,000, something like that?
Right to ship.
It was around, yeah, to try and get it around. So if you, just a dollar figure, just throwing out, you know, that's, that was where we were.
700,000?
That's where we were aiming at, at an override, which did not pass, but I mean, that, you know.
I think it was over 700,000, so put it at like 800,000.
Yeah, it was a bit over that probably, but it was somewhere in that range. So I mean, that's a.
That's for milk.
That's a figure that we were aiming at. So anyway, I think, I think, I don't want to belabor this. We've got a, a long meeting ahead of us here, but if.
I want to talk all night.
I know, I know we could.
Having a good time here.
We're just going to have to have you back.
Let me just, and Chief, you missed it. I was just, when I, when I started, it was just phenomenal job out there. That, that really, it really, I think that that's not every community. Everybody's asking for what just happened, but not everybody's doing it. So a feather in your cap and everybody appreciate what, appreciate what you do. Absolutely, absolutely. Can we please do this more often?
Sure, absolutely.
I think, I think it's really important because some of the stuff, and I've done this in my district, like you could have a, I don't know, it, it could be a, a random $100,000 for a, a something vehicle in Southampton. I mean, I know that those, what we refer to as onesies and twosies, you know, I could get that for you and then it, and then it kind of negates you having to buy it. And then that money can go to schools or something like that. So that, that, I mean, I can, I, I, look, I've, there, there's one thing that even my enemies, well, not my enemies, my detractors would say is that I have demonstrated a very good ability to get state resources. So I need to know what they are and I will, and I will, I will bring them back. And this was very, very helpful. So from my standpoint, to kind of go army for a second, the, the do-outs are the, the ARPA stuff that we talked about, the infrastructure stuff, what is that process? And, and then just to kind of make this a, I don't know, a few times, three, four times a year, something like that.
Quarterly or something, if that works out, that'd be great.
I think we need to do that.
That'd be wonderful.
There's no, now that, now that, I was going to say now that, now that COVID is less of a thing, is that appropriate to say? Where we can do this, I would, I would, it would be, it'd be great.
Good.
So.
Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely, any, any, any time.
We really appreciate you taking the time and coming both to the earlier event as well as being here for us tonight. So thanks again.
I truly love representing this community, so I look forward to continue that.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
All right, very good.
Almost good.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so then I think Bridget, we will move on next. So again, just to reintroduce Bridget Lively from the Kestrel Land Trust, who's got a short presentation for us and then we'll get into our.
Not that far, so you're doing good.
Regular meeting here.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yep. Should be Cher.
All right, that looks like.
Perfect, there you go.
All right. Hey, it works. Good. We'll let you introduce your topic. We understood it was something around the Massachusetts Landscape Partnership, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. So thank you everyone for your time today. As Chris said, my name is Bridget Likely. I'm a Conservation Manager at Kestrel Land Trust. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to give the select board a brief update on a potential conservation project that the Open Space Committee and the Conservation Commission are exploring with Kestrel Land Trust. And we're hoping that this project can meet many goals of the Open Space and Recreation Plan currently with the town, as well as meet the interests of several private landowners who have inquired with the Open Space Committee and Kestrel Land Trust recently. And this is thanks largely in part to the good work that Open Space Committee has been doing over the past few years, reach out to private landowners and connect with them through educational meetings and other outreach and let them know of the conservation options available to them within the town. And so specifically, we're looking at exploring the feasibility of applying to, as you said, the Massachusetts Landscape Partnership Grant Program. And so this is a specific grant program funded by the state that has been developed to allow for protection of large-scale lands in various ownership in order to maximize ecological connectivity, habitat connectivity, as well as recreational opportunities within the community, working lands, and of course, climate resiliency. And so some unique features of this grant program is that in order to meet the requirements of the program, you must minimally identify 500 acres of contiguous land to be protected. And that can be done through a combination of fee purchases or conservation restrictions. Both agricultural and watershed preservation restrictions are also eligible for this program. This program allows for multiple project partners to be involved and hold interests and contribute to the funding. So along with Kestrel Land Trust and the town, we could also include other nonprofits like the Nature Conservancy in this grant application, state partners like the Department of Conservation and Recreation or even other municipalities. And through this program, you can seek up to 1.25 million dollars in funding. Like other state grant programs, this is reimbursement and it does include a match requirement. But all these upfront costs in the match can be contributed and shared by multiple partners. So while this is a very complex project and a large-scale project, that burden can be shared across multiple partners in order to meet this, you know, lofty but important goal. And in terms of, you know, where we're looking to protect and find those 500 acres for this grant program, what's really great is that the land that ranks highest within this grant program also aligns very well with the focus areas the Open Space Committee has been looking at over the past few years and which has been identified in their Open Space and Recreation Plan. Not only that, but also aligns with the land owned by the landowners that have reached out to us recently and looking for conservation options. So that's, as you can see in the map, largely in the northwest corner of Southampton. And so those bright, solid, large green blocks are already protected lands in that area. But then the surrounding brown areas is unprotected land, but that has been identified as ecologically very significant and important for habitat, wildlife, climate resiliency, et cetera. The green stripes, so interior forests, so this is large blocks of unfragmented forests that currently exist in Southampton. And we feel well-suited to being protected through this grant program.
So is the 500 acres within the dotted red line?
Um, so, you know, there's multiple areas we're looking at, but largely that, that northwest corner. I don't know if I can show, is my mouse coming up? Yeah, so here, largely this area here is where we're looking. And you can see as well that it's also a very climate resilient area. So this is the Nature's Conservancy's climate resilient data and those large pink blocks are what's considered very climate resilient landscape. So this all kind of aligns and it's really come together and is the right timing to really look at this area for protection. And not only is this really beneficial on a, a local protection and landscape scale, but also on a regional scale. So not only are we looking, you know, within Massachusetts, but also on a regional and even an international scale. So what you see on this map is an effort through a regional conservation partnership known as Berkshire Linkages. So they're looking to protect corridors from the New York Hudson Highlands up through the Green Mountains of Vermont. So this area of Southampton fits right within these corridors that's being looked at for this program. Not only that, but also what's known as two forests, one country. And that's looking to protect Swasso land, you know, from the Northern Appalachians up through the Acadians into Canada. So it's really building on, you know, multiple blocks of protection, whether it's, you know, the town of Southampton itself, Hampshire County, Massachusetts, on up through something that's including Canada. So it's, it's a really unique opportunity, this grant program, to contribute something really important for conservation that benefits not only the municipality, but the region.
And this is a state program, not a federal program?
This is a state program, correct. But matching can be federal as well as private and, and everything, so it really builds on itself. And so that's just, you know, a broad overview of the program and we're still very much in the exploration stage. So what we're really just looking for tonight is some general support from the select board to continue exploring the feasibility to apply to this program. So what that means is next steps for Kestrel and the Open Space Committee and the Conservation Commission is really confirming those landowner interests and finding those 500 at least contiguous acres that we can work with to apply for the program. And then finding those additional partners that can help us, you know, hold those interests so to be protected as well as adding to the funding sources. And should all that move forward, we anticipate applying to the grant itself in May of 2023. And then if that moves forward and we get the, the funding, based on past bids that we've seen, we anticipate required project completion by June of 2026. So, you know, it's a several-year project, but it's one large effort that really accomplishes a lot.
Has Kestrel done this same program in other parts of the state?
We have, yes. So we've done it two times on the Mountain Holyoke Range, so Hadley and Amherst. So we've worked, you know, across municipalities before. I'm trying to think if we've done it elsewhere. I think we've done at least one other one. Yes.
Which?
And West End, Kestrel, Freeland, and Marne.
Uh huh, okay, all right, okay. So this is basically working though with, using the, the Open Space and Recreation Plan as a base and, and working with the, the committee to try and identify and talk to landowners who have already expressed an interest in doing something with their land.
Absolutely.
Interesting, okay. Great, wow. And Kestrel would help put the grant together?
Yes, yes.
Oh, good. Oh, good. That's always welcome.
It's a huge grant.
Yeah, yeah, no, this would be huge.
So one of my questions when we were going over with Open Space was, I think the terms of the grant, the applicant has to be the Conservation Commission and not the Open Space? And that's something that we discussed, the Conservation Commission has to be the applicant.
Yes, we did confirm that with the grant supervisor, Vanessa Farney, and she did confirm that. But that's not to say that the Open Space Committee can't, you know, share.
Yes, absolutely.
The work of, you know, applying. But ultimately in terms of who holds the interests, in the end, it does need to be the Conservation Commission.
Well, also who's responsible for the properties at the end of the day too, is the Conservation Commission?
So if the land goes to the town interest, so it can be shared, so it can be a fee purchase that, you know, Kestrel, say the town holds a fee interest, Kestrel could hold the CR or it could be some just Kestrel holds the CR or some can go to DCR. So like I said, multiple partners means that those interests don't ultimately have to fall on one partner. So it doesn't have to be just the town holding all the land interests for protection. It can be shared across, but some will be shared by the town and, and have the Conservation Commission hold the land or the conservation restriction.
My concern is our, our town has lots of open space and conservation land that has been difficult. Our Conservation Commission is a volunteer board.
Yes.
We don't have a conservation agent yet. Hopefully we'll be hiring one soon. So it's just been difficult to maintain the properties and to keep on top of them. So is there something different with this grant that, that will help us maintain these properties? Or something different that Kestrel will be doing? Or is it going to be very similar to, you know, the status quo of our conservation properties now?
Well, like I said, you know, hopefully the burden will be, we share it across multiple partners. And then also the types of land or the purposes it's being protected for, like I said, is largely these blocks of unfragmented forests, which is a little more passive in terms of management and stewardship rather than active, you know, things where there's a, a vast trail network and things need to be plowed and there's a parking area. So I think in many of these cases, there will be less of a, you know, management stewardship burden than in other projects we've done in the past.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Any questions else? Anybody? Any comments?
Also, I did have another question, I'm sorry. Have you also spoken with other towns that Southampton? Have you also spoken with other towns that Southampton is projected to be collaborating with, like West Hampton, or I don't, or other, East Hampton?
Yeah, so I don't think we've done any direct outreach to West Hampton. I think maybe Monk Armory might be on our list as well, but that would be part of our next steps in the feasibility.
So this could be a multi-town?
Yes, yeah, because you go back to those maps, and clearly, the forests are across town borders, so we don't want to limit ourselves if there's an opportunity there.
Right. Good. Okay. Good. Well, I think, I don't know, anybody have any objections to them continuing on this trail of exploring the idea of the Landscape Partnership Grant and working with Open Space to continue and identify interested people? I mean, it seems like a worthwhile endeavor.
I definitely support it.
No objections?
Yeah. I mean, the challenge is writing the grant and getting the grant.
Yes, absolutely.
That's another story. But I mean, if indeed there are landowners, and I know there's been various educational events that have been held over the last couple of years where Open Space Committee has tried to put out a lot of materials about how can somebody who wants to pass on their land and conserve it, how do they do that? There's multiple ways, and this is definitely a huge undertaking. A 500-acre event would be pretty substantial in terms of preserving areas for climate change and other things. So would be interesting to see. Yeah. Tammy, you have a question? Sure. We'll take a question.
Tammy Olinis, 298 College Highway. So are we talking now that we're going to take another 500 acres out of our revenue where we would be earning revenue off of real estate and taxes and coming into our town, and now we're going to own it, so we're not going to get that anymore?
Well, we'll let Rigid answer what this land is that's already being talked about, right? You were talking about forested land.
Yes, so this is forested land, and it doesn't necessarily need to be sold in order to be protected. It could remain in private ownership simply with the conservation restriction on it. And the majority of the lands we're looking at are already enrolled in Chapter 61 programs, so conservation restriction would put it at a very similar tax revenue base. And so we're not really anticipating huge differences in tax revenue based on the protection of this land, just by the nature of what it is already.
What it already is, yeah.
Thank you. Of course.
But regardless of whether this is successful or not, any of those pre-existing property owners that are identified up there could on their own decide to put it into conservation right outside of this, and they're free to do so, it's their land.
Yes.
Right? They're free to do so today, regardless of whether we have this grant. This is just trying to target everything that's not in green up there, up in the northwest corner, right?
Yeah, this is just a way to kind of provide an opportunity for multiple landowners at the same time through a larger funding revenue where otherwise it might be more incremental, and things might get fragmented that way or on a larger timeline.
There's no way here, there's no mechanism envisioned or as part of this that would force them to do it.
No, no. It's all willing landowners. That's always how we operate, yep.
So I would analogize, it sounds like it's like you suing a big company versus like a class action lawsuit. Like, I know, that's a weird word, metaphor, but that's what it sounds like. You're trying to get all these landowners to buy into this project at once, and it makes it affordable for everyone.
Exactly.
Because I know just one landowner at a time, it can be a lot of legal fees, a lot of, you know, burden.
Says the attorney.
No, I'm sorry.
No, no. I think it's also contiguous land is so important for conservation.
Yes, absolutely.
That's why it's so big.
That's really the focus.
I mean, it's one thing to have individual people conserve little parts of land that are not connected, but the fact that it's contiguous is huge for all kinds of reasons.
Yes. Especially when you're talking wildlife habitat and so forth. You look at the wildlife corridors on any of these maps, I'm sure you'd see quite a connection that's already there.
Yeah, absolutely.
So some of this land is not in Chapter 61.
Not all of it is in Chapter 61.
So you're going to be seeking to approach these private landowners to?
Yes, yes. Somewhere in conversation with already. Some we might do an outreach letter just because they're a budding, others we're interested in right now. But of course, all of it's absolutely landowners that are interested and willing is who we work with. There's no arm twisting or anything like that.
Great. Okay. Great, thank you.
All right.
Well, thanks.
Thank you very much.
I think it's interesting and keep us informed in terms of how the progress is going, I guess, I would say. But it sounds like a worthwhile endeavor to try and explore. So thank you for Kestrel's interest in Southampton. I know we've had a lot of collaboration in the past, but it sounds like we're coming up to the top of Kestrel's radar screen as well, which is great. So thank you. All right. Let us move on. And thanks for waiting also, and thanks for coming tonight. Okay, we don't have any quarterly reports tonight. Can we move John up? Yeah, I was going to say, we've got Ed's report, we've got, could we do, do we have much for Select Board reports? I was just going to have Ed do his report, and then maybe we'll jump into John since he's here on the other business. We just do Ed, your administrative report?
Sure.
I don't know if we have too many things for Select Board reports, but they can be very quick if you've had a meeting.
Thank you.
This is our Ed's report. Thank you. Then we'll get to John, okay? Yeah, go for it.
All right. So Jen, Bradley, and I are wrapping up a few remaining requests for our auditors, Melanzen, for our fiscal year 2021 financial audit. These should be completed and sent to them by the end of next week. They did let us know that they may have some follow-up questions. Senator Vellus will be here at the Council on Aging on Monday, August 29th, at 10:00 a.m. for an ARPA earmark celebration for the $50,000 in funding that Senator Vellus secured for the senior center. His office would like to invite the members of the Select Board to attend this presentation. Bradley Oxon, Jen Day, and I will be having the demonstrations of the three modules, tax billing and collection, fund accounting and water billing and collections, from Vedar on their financial software system on this Wednesday, August 17th, and Thursday, August 18th. These are also cloud-based solutions. As a follow-up to a question from the last Select Board meeting, the website redesign proposed contract from Final Site was for a five-year contract for the annual support cost of $5,500 per year. They would do a three-year contract, but the support cost per year would increase to $5,750 per year for those three years. The fiscal year '22 revenue report is now complete with the revenue receipts through May 31st, 2022. These fiscal year '22 revenues should be complete through June 30th, 2022, by August 30th, 2022. We did have our annual state elevator inspection today for the Town Hall, and everything passed. We were receiving our new inspection certification for the next year, and that will be posted in the elevator. The Board of Health was distributing the COVID-19 rapid test kits that we received free from the state at the Southampton Day Celebration on this past Saturday. And then, let's see, according to a previous assistant town accountant who was here when the Park Flower Fund was to be set up, it was supposed to be set up as a gift fund for being in control under the town. The fund is currently located in a Fund 24 Other Special Revenues Fund. I would like to recommend that the town accountant transfer these funds into a Fund 26 Gift Fund. And then upcoming Select Board meetings, August 30th, and then Select Board meetings for September to be determined.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody have any questions of Ed? Yeah, Rini, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First is on the website thing. The first year of the web design, is that ARPA funding? And then, we haven't addressed year two and three?
Correct. That would be in the budget.
Okay. And?
And I'm trying to remember, I think we have like $3,200 in there now.
So it would only be the difference?
It would be the difference, correct.
And I don't understand the difference between the Fund 24 versus Fund 26. What do you mean by that?
We do fund accounting. Fund 24 is the other revenues, the special revenue fund. The Fund 26 is where the gift funds are supposed to be. So from what we were told by that previous assistant town accountant, when the town accountant sent this up, and of course, we've changed software since there, and so at the time, it may have been set up as a gift fund. From what we've been told, it should reside in, along with the other gift funds, rather than that other special revenue fund.
And does this have anything to do with the presentation that we had from the local group that is interested in helping to manage these funds? Wasn't that part of the?
That's what, yeah, that's what spurred this, shall we say, investigation of how that fund is set up.
Will that stay then a town fund, or?
From what we've been told, it was to be set up as a gift fund under the control of the town. From what we were told from this side is that, no, it wasn't just that the town took those funds and was going to, shall we say, account for them and dole them out, that it was supposed to be a gift fund under the control of the town.
Okay. So then, that would obviate their need to set up a 501(c)(3) so that they could collect the money and use the money. They have access to it for those purposes if it was designated for them, is that right?
They have access to it for, shall we say, flowers and the use of the parks.
Right. Without setting up some, another entity.
I mean, even if the town wanted to, it could set up another gift fund, which was the beautification of town property in general, that is not specific to parks or anything else. It's only basically when it's an outside group from town government that sets something up that it, to be a true nonprofit and be deductible to those that donate to it, it should be a 501(c)(3).
Any other questions? Shall we take a look quickly at the Select Board meetings for September while we got that right on our radar screen here? Thanks for getting the revenue report up through May, and we'll look forward to getting the final one at our next meeting on the 30th. And so then, that would bring us past Labor Day, that would put the next meetings at the 13th and the 27th, I believe. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah. It looks good.
It's not on the primary day.
Yeah. Exactly.
Mr., that's the sixth, right?
It is, yeah. The election, primary election on the sixth. Okay, so Select Board meetings, September 13 and 27. Okay. Good. All right. Any other questions of Ed? If not, any highlights of any quick Select Board meetings? Anybody have any Select Board reports, rather?
I'd like to do just quickly.
Yeah.
Okay. The Bylaw Review Advisory Committee met yesterday after a couple postponements during the month of July. We completed the four-month-long review process of the draft manuscript that was produced by E360, which will offer online bylaw resource to citizens. The manuscript represents both the format and the searchability of the town bylaws. The draft manuscript organizes cross-references and establishes the consistency of terms and references among and between all of the town bylaw articles. So instead of having to go through each article to find the relationship, the system will do it for people, and it will just bring it up. The way in which E360, the company that we're using, has reformatted our bylaws increases ease of access and searchability, ultimately providing town residents with a resource we currently don't have. E360 has not advised us when the bylaw website will go live, but I would expect that we're only a few months away from that. And we will plan to have a demonstration of the web-based bylaw utilization for town residents once it's up and running. I do want to add that the responsibility of the document review was shared with the planning committee, who has responsibility for the town's zoning bylaws. And then last night, the Zoning Board of Appeals met to review an application for a special permit for construction of a two-family home at 16 Gun Road Extension. The home plans call for a building of 48 by 28 feet with a detached two-car garage. One half of the house will be owner-occupied, and the other half of the house of the two-family will be a rental. The ZBA approved the permit on condition, and to accurately provide information regarding the terms of those conditions, I'm going to wait until I get the minutes and the actual wording, and I'll share it with you at a later meeting. And then finally, the Board of Health will meet tomorrow night, August 17th, at 5:00 p.m. at Conan Park. And since I'm unavailable to attend that meeting, I ask that someone volunteer to go in my place. Any volunteers?
I can go.
Okay. Thank you, Rini. Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody? John, have anything?
Nope.
Any meeting?
All right. CBC hasn't met, no meetings planned. Public Safety Building Committee, the meeting on the 8th of August was postponed. The next meeting is next Monday at 4:30. COA Building Feasibility Committee hasn't met, but they have a meeting on Thursday. Five companies have submitted proposals for the RFQ, for the senior center, and those proposals, there's a scoring, and the committee has the task of scoring the proposals, and that will be discussed at 12:30 on Thursday at the next public, the COA Building Feasibility Committee meeting. COA met last Wednesday, August 10th. Janet Kane provided a graph with expenditures, both funded by the town and the State Formula Grant. We welcomed the new program coordinator officially, Sandra Massimino. Currently, the volunteer coordinator position is open, and it's not on the website, Ed. I looked on that, and I don't know if that's something that can be put up on the website. Most of the other positions that are open were there, but I didn't see that one.
It can if they send it to me to be posted.
Okay. I'll make a note to do that. Officer Grober from the Police Department did a presentation to the COA on the reassurance program. So this was a collaboration that started by a group of people, Fire Department, Police Department, COA folks, myself, and basically, there is a program that's going to be started. It's called the reassurance program. So for a senior or somebody who perhaps has a disability, there is a call program. So every day, they would call into dispatch and just let them know that they're okay. And if the police don't hear from them, then they would put a call out to them, and if they don't answer the phone, then they would go ahead and send a police officer out there. In order to be part of this program, you'd have to have an agreement to get a lockbox, and all the lockboxes, there's quite a few of them available because they were donated thanks to Triad, as well as the Polish National Credit Union. So anyway, it's called the reassurance program, and there's a flyer that's going to be distributed to a number of different places, including the newspapers and the Facebook and a number of places. So that is officially starting.
So this is like a voluntary wellness check?
It's a voluntary wellness check. That's a very good description, actually.
Okay. Reassurance, kind of threw me off in terms of its naming there. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we want to make sure that seniors in town are all, you know, okay, and we certainly don't want more, you know, a lot of period of time to go by without people knowing that, you know, if they need help. So we want to make sure that, and, you know, we encourage people to join into this program. I mean, the police are very interested in making sure that everybody stays well. And then, there's a Financial Elder Abuse Program on the 14th of September at Southampton Country Club, and this is from 12 to 2:00. And it's a collaboration between the Sheriff's Office, the Police Department, and the DA's office, again, sponsored by Polish National Credit Union. And it's Financial Elder Abuse, and if you're interested in attending, you need to contact the COA and get on the list because they are limiting, and it is a lunch, free lunch. The next meeting of the COA is on the 7th of September. The Board of Assessors met last week. There's no current applicants for the PA Principal Assessor position. They continue to do the work of the office. They're doing a great job capturing and rightsizing tax revenue for property and personal property. Ed, I know that the three-year contract was signed with NearView, which is the aerial imaging software program, and there's an unlimited number of licenses. And at the time, we discussed how important it would be for police, fire, building inspector, potentially Board of Health. And I'm just wondering if that might be something that could be discussed at a department head meeting, and maybe with the help of Dave Arnold, maybe do a training for staff and let people have a login?
Sure.
That'd be great. That'd be great. And then the, you know, Janine and Dave Sikorski are continuing to cover the office as the employees. And the next meeting is Tuesday, the 23rd at 4:00.
Okay, Joy, quickly.
Planning Board, I ended up being late, but towards the end of the discussion, they had a long discussion in regards to wanting to look into the sidewalk fund and projects, bringing projects and grants to make more sidewalks in town. So that's something that they're going to be looking into, and they asked me to do some research on. And one of the, the vice chair of the planning board has worked on these projects, for example, in Montgomery, and really thought that he would like to help us work on something here in Southampton. So that's something the planning board's looking into. They've finished with the E-code with their consultant. So they're looking at something else to work on. Housing Authority met on August 8th. Oh, and their next, planning board's next meeting is tomorrow night. Housing Authority met on August 8th. They, we reviewed our bylaw for the housing trust, which we sent over to the Bylaw Review Committee. And I understand that there are some questions and revisions to be made, to be brought back to the Bylaw Review Committee. So that's something that we will be doing. Their next meeting is September 12th. Conservation Commission met. Nothing super particular in regards to that, but there's just project, I know I've seen some things about logging, and there's a lot of forestry going on, work on conservation lands, Alice Brown Conservation Land. That's all part of a forestry plan that the conservation plan has already signed on. So just be aware, if you're concerned about anyone cutting down trees, if, please check and see if it's on conservation property. That's part of our forestry health plan. Their next meeting is September 19th. Open Space is meeting on Thursday, August 18th. In regards, I did go to that Mass in Motion Conference for the day, which was excellent. It was excellent company. Board of Health from Southampton, or from South Hadley joined, and a member of PVPC, as well as Caitlin Merkey, who is the executive director of the project. They were actually, she's actually in charge of, they were part of 19 communities, and out of that, only two came. But it was still a really informative and great conference. It was, this is a project that's funded through DPH, and they're really looking at inequity issues in Massachusetts communities, for example, food deserts, and trying to come up with, Caitlin's job will be coming up with a plan for the communities, whatever the issue is, coming up with a plan. So she would like to hear from Southampton if there's something that she can really work on and hear about any issues. And she said she's, she would welcome an invitation to come speak with the Select Board at any time. So it was a great event.
Well, thank you for representing Southampton. It's good to hear that we were at least present at the table, which is always, always a good thing, so. Okay, Francie, just one more thing.
Yeah, one other thing from the Board of Health. The Southampton and East Hampton Health Departments are hosting a COVID-19 vaccine clinic on August 17th at Nora School for children aged six months to five years. Pre-registration is required. The hours of the clinic are 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and they are offering the Moderna vaccine.
That's tomorrow.
Yep. Yes. So there is a pre-registration. I can read the address, but I think people can access it on, on the town Facebook page and the school and the Board of Health.
The Chair of the Board of Health, Kate Rooks, has posted it on her.
On the town website, too.
On the town website as well.
Yeah.
In the past, they've had funding for custodian and also police. Is that not an issue with this town?
It's not been brought up. So it's, it's both us and the East Hampton Health Department together, so not sure. We hadn't heard much about it. But just one quickie from my end on the Grant Committee. I was telling you that we might have some news, and we do, on the RAISE grant, which is the big federal grant that we put in for a million dollars for, for the Greenway. We got a list yesterday of all the grants that were given throughout the country, and we're not on there. So they said that unsuccessful applicants will receive an email with instructions about how to get a debrief in terms of how our application could have been different or better or more competitive. But apparently, there were lots and lots of money given out, but there was nothing in rural Massachusetts, let alone Western Massachusetts. I think there were two in Boston area. So we, we did not, we weren't the only ones, but that was one, we thought it was a long shot, but anyway, so that's one that is closed to us anyway. So, so be it. We'll keep on chugging. Grants and cost efficiencies both meet next week, Wednesday and Thursday respectively. Bye, I zoom. Okay, I think that's it for reports. Let's go on to new business. And let us take, as John has been waiting patiently here, talk about the Fire EMS wage updates for FY '23 and see where we had some questions, I think, from the last meeting and what you've been able to.
So we don't need this?
You don't need this. This one just pulls out the Fire EMS.
Okay, oh, so this is the one that was in the packet, which is still valid?
Which is still valid because later probably we'll be looking to actually have that study.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is just the Fire EMS? Okay. So what are we talking about?
I don't have my glasses, so I'll wing it.
Basically, what John did is there definitely seemed to be a, you know, an understanding, a disconnect between the wages and the, that are on the fiscal year '23 sheet and, shall we say, the Fire EMS pay matrix that John has developed over the years. So what I thought might bring them together is John added a column to actually Jennifer's spreadsheet for the fiscal year '23 of everyone's wages, just pulled out the Fire EMS. But in that second column, he has put in the positions we would have seen on that Fire EMS pay matrix. So there's a, now, there's a correlation between names, wages, and the positions as they, they fell onto that, you know, matrix. And, you know, just for, just from my own perception, you know, one of the things of just looking at, okay, the fiscal year '22 wage on July 1st was, which the Select Board signed off on, which this report's on, and what is that wage for fiscal year '23 on July 1st, 2022, does not reflect the adjustments that were made at the special town meeting, adding funds into the department wage account or the approval by the Select Board of the updated Fire EMS wages that added $3, so I think it was paramedic wages and $1 after an hour or two, EMT wages, and adjusting people, anyone up that was below the minimum wage level, which was done, I think it was either end of January, beginning of February.
So what you're saying, the wage sheet that we had did not reflect those?
It didn't reflect that. So that's why you're seeing, you know, a large percentage increase. Jen did identify some positions on there that she did have the, an incorrect wage for fiscal year '22. But like I say, this tries to tie together for the Select Board's information, the name of the individual, the employee, the position from that wage matrix that, you know, PPPB and Select Board approved, and then that's what the fiscal year '23 salary should be.
I think the question that came up had to do with the percentage increase that, and I don't know whether or not it ended up, that some of them seemed a high percentage relative to, I mean, I think that there were numerous, like, increases that happened along the way. One of them was the minimum wage, then there was one at the special town meeting, and then there was adjustments that were made at the annual town meeting. So this FY '23 pay rate includes all of them?
Correct.
Some of them were then over 12% then because of those various step increases?
There are not many over 12%. I think there's like one over 14 or whatever.
The highest one's 22.13%.
Okay.
And then, but with the three, and the reason why there, half of them are over is because of that $3 adjustment.
Right.
Which is triggering. So that's another 15, so 16, 16 of them are over the 12%. Which is what really triggered it because we had, was part of the issue was that the budget process, we capped everybody at 12. But during the budget discussion, we weren't addressing the fire department because we'd already done that in January. So it wasn't on anybody's radar until the sheet showed up. And at least for me, where the confusion came is missing the column of the positions and not knowing all 50 of these people to know exactly what they're doing. So having the, you know, from my point of view, having these names in here, I can somewhat follow, I can get pretty close to, to the numbers to say, okay, yep. You know, if I, if I do all the math myself, I can get closer within a couple pennies. But the, are all 50 of these people that are on here, have they worked at least one shift in the last fiscal year? And I, the reason I ask that, John, is there's 12 of them on here who their current wages for '23 are below any of the scales that we've approved.
Yeah, I mean, I do have some people on there, especially paramedics, for different reasons, have health, family, have taken a step back. Hard to tell when they'll be back. So I couldn't just remove them for a set period of time. It wasn't like they went to the military for six months. So I have kept them on the roster, just because if they do become available and their circumstances change, I am looking for them to come back. And besides, you know, there's, I don't know what costs are for employees to keep them on the books, but I'm not paying them, of course, unless they work.
Right. Okay.
But the rate should be adjusted. I mean, what's the minimum wage now, 1475?
1425, yes.
Oh, 1425. And then January goes up to 15.
It'll go to 15 in January.
Nobody's got to be below that, right?
Is there anybody below the 1425?
No, there isn't.
There shouldn't be.
No.
No, they're all 14.
I thought we had adjusted everybody. And we did a blanket one at one point. Didn't we take some of those and, and put them at least at that minimum wage at this point in time? So was everybody for FY '22? I guess I'm, has everybody been paid correctly? Are we, are we shortchanging people because we didn't have the right figure put in here? No?
My guess, if they were just not on the books, it's, they didn't, they didn't work.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I would think if, if people weren't paid correctly, they would have hollered at us, right? I mean, we wouldn't know.
And all of my, all of my pay sheets show, because everything that determines their pay, since I've been in tenancy since 2013, has been through Personnel Policy Procedure Board, been signed off by Select Board, Accounting and myself. And so there's not, there's no arbitrary pay raise for anybody. All of them should coincide with all of the increases come with minimum wage adjustments. Probably the big one that Ed referred to was the, the town meeting vote to right-size wages for paramedics and EMTs, just so we could get people in. And so that's probably what you see for the 12 and 13% discrepancies, would be my, would be my guess. Just, and I think it's just more of an accounting, as Ed had mentioned, because it wasn't added in, because it went from, because it became, came in the mid-fiscal year.
Right.
It wasn't part of the database she was originally working with, but did show up in this fiscal year, so.
I, I think when the list came to us, it's alphabetized. So there's no, I mean, there's a reason for it, right? It's alphabetized, but the numbers were all over the scale. But once you add the positions and now you sort by the positions, the pay rates are pretty, you know, they're, they're all clumped together in consistency. And, you know, like you have the EMTP, they're, they all match the scales. But when you get to the EMTP slash FF, right? So I'm assuming they get $1.50, actually, at least mathematically. Those were the, that's the pieces that are missing, is you have to reference back to the other sheet, but you can't do that without the titles in order to say the numbers work.
And for a lot of that, I mean, I, you know, some employees predate me.
Yep.
And so this is, you know, people have gotten different duties added to them with some pay incentives as per that sheet that we went over. But I'd have to go through 10 years of their employment history if they were with me that long to make sure that I identify each of those for each of those individuals. So it would be reflective then in the job position.
Okay. Yeah, ready?
Can you just explain the different levels? I'm just seeing a couple captains, a couple lieutenants. You know, what is, how does it work? Are they first in command? Is it, what is it, what do they have to do to achieve a captain status versus lieutenant status? And deputy, I mean, it looks like Richard Fasoli is in command in your absence or something as a second person?
That's correct, yeah.
So can you just explain a little bit about the order of all that?
Sure. I mean, we're a paramilitary organization, and so if, if you go by, like numbering, I'm X1. Richard Fasoli would be X2 as deputy chief. Patrick Eline would be, as a captain, is X3. The other captain is X4. And so as in paramilitary, it just works down that chain of command for who would be in command, highest ranking at a scene.
So you determine the number of leadership positions you need, or do people do various things to reach that designation? And then you may have multiple lieutenants, for example?
Correct, yeah. There, some of the challenge is, like, there, I am going to be looking at an adjustment as I lose my EMS coordinator. He is relatively low-dollar individual, but that's because.
Brian Morris?
No, 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 that's Bob Moore.
Okay.
Wonderful guy. He's been in service for 40 years. He does not ride any emergency vehicle. He's administrative duties only. We're going to lose that wealth of experience, but we have some people that, one just became a lieutenant, will bump up to captain and move another lieutenant up to captain. So I'll have two captains, which will actually balance out the team because the two captains presently are pretty much fire captains. So I'm looking to move up two into the, as EMS captains.
Okay.
And so mostly, it's a balance and then duty-driven also.
Okay. So you decide what you need for leadership and move people? It's not, they all reach a certain designation by?
Yeah, no, it's not, yeah. I mean, generally, folks present themselves pretty definitively for a position. And if, occasionally, we'll have a couple in which case you'll have them submit, you know, a proposal as to why they want to be in the position, it gets reviewed, move up in that regard.
But it's not because they've taken other courses and gotten other credentials or anything like that that they would move?
If it's in an area that the department needs, has need in, then that would certainly be considered. But it's not a prerequisite to a title.
Oh, from a lieutenant to a captain?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, good, that was clear, thank you. Anybody have any questions on this still? Are we okay with this?
Well, just so I understand what you just said.
Yep.
So currently, it looks like one chief, one deputy, two captains, two lieutenants.
Yeah.
You just say you're going to go to four captains?
Four captains.
And maintain two lieutenants as well?
Two lieutenants will, they'll move to captain, but I, at this time, I probably will not backfill that lieutenant position.
Yeah, there's more lieutenant.
There's six lieutenants.
Yeah, yeah, so, but the two lieutenants that I'm looking to move forward to captain positions. At this time, I'm not planning to bring two more, to bring two more lieutenants in.
Okay.
Same number of officers.
Same number of officers.
Different allocation.
Yep, correct.
Well, hopefully, the increases have helped on the staffing.
Yeah, I mean, it's still a tough go out there. You know, we're, you know, we're, we've got challenges. You know, we've got really great staff, and if I could clone them, we'd be golden. So we're constantly, we're bringing in some new EMTs now. You're going to be getting some new PCFs come across. I'm really also trying to emphasize getting in some basics, some, you know, starting position folks, just because I can offset some costs by doing a, what they call a PB shift rather than a double medic. And if I can get some consistency with a basic that medics like to work with, because they, it's, because you're alone in Southampton, many other departments. Many other departments, when you go on a call, you may have other people that can help or an engine company that can come help assist. In Southampton, you're kind of, because you're, it's only a two-person shift, you're kind of on your own. I do give them the flexibility and there's some high acuity calls that it's a requirement of state that you bring in another paramedic. So even with a double paramedic crew, there's some calls that do necessitate bringing in an additional paramedic. And certainly, I allow it to the discretion of the crew. If they feel it's in their interest, patient care interest, that they can call for that at any time. Just because the name of the game is patient care.
Right. Right. Okay. Good.
So the only thing that I've, it's more of a comment and not a question, but I think one thing that would help a year from now when we have this same conversation, sheet shows up, is, and I don't know about modifying Jen's sheet here that she uses, but using this to kind of break out the column, you know, column one is the wage. Then if you have the firefighter cert, you know, so it kind of goes across.
Sure.
So you can, for our point, we can clearly match the wages up. Yep, that's good. Yeah, okay, $1.50 for this and they have all that. And then I, I think on the other side, on the insurance side, that having the last, having a column that's the last time they actually worked. Because if you've got somebody that, say, just over a course of time, that ends up being four years, we're probably more at liability because we're still carrying them, which means we're identifying them on our insurance, right?
Yeah. And I do, and I do have people that I am looking to remove from roster. So I just, it just hasn't been my priority right now, but I am looking to take some people from roster.
But if you, if you don't mind, I'll just, I'll take this, mark up my thoughts and then just send it to you to do what you want with it?
Yeah, and if you want to sit down, and honestly, you know, it's, it's, you know, sitting here with spreadsheet in front of me, a little bit of a challenge.
Yep.
I found, trying to answer what Ed, I was a little bit misunderstanding what you folks were looking for. When I had a conversation with the treasurer, she identified some clerical things that she adjusted, which I believe got transferred over. When I recognized that all you were looking for was the job description, that's an easier go for me. One of the things that I have identified and I do need to look at and is a challenge, and I've ran into problems with it prior, but will address probably in the new fiscal year when we get to it, is when someone comes into the department new, I look at that matrix that we have. If they have six years of experience, then I put them in at that slot with whatever, you know, firefighter, whatever it might happen to be. If they stay with us for 10 years, if they haven't gotten cost of living increases, it can get to a point 10 years later or five years later where someone with, let's use five years, so let's say they came in at six, they now have 11 years. Somebody comes in with 11 years and to the matrix, they're earning more than someone who's been with us for five years. And so it's not on their license when they were certified to that level. It's, it's a question that I ask as they come in to the service. But I recognize that I don't have a database that identifies that. And there's no way I can't reach out to the state and get it. I have to go individual by individual to build that. And it would probably be appropriate then to look to see where everybody is in regards to their years of experience and exactly what you folks are doing, which is look at that matrix and see how that fits in and whether they should have an adjustment.
I don't disagree with that. The, the, I don't want to mention his name since we're in public session, but the individual you mentioned that's retiring?
Yep.
Roughly, how many hours bi-weekly or pay cycle was he actually working?
How much do I need him or how much does he actually work?
What was he actually doing? I mean, not what was he doing, but was he five hours every two weeks, 10 hours?
Wonderful individual and wealth of experience. He's, there's some things that have limited his ability and, and availability to be here. So I've had some, like, some of the lieutenants that are in EMS now stepping up to take over some of his tasks.
So maybe the better question is, for the tasks that he was doing in his prime or collectively, what's the cumulative number of hours, regardless of how many people he has to do?
I would just be guessing because it really depends on, I would have to add them up. I mean, to shoot off the cuff, I don't know exactly what those hours are because a lot of those are going to be administrative hours. So just if, for every member of the department that's, has a certification for EMT, even our first responders, we actually track all of that stuff. All of the certifications have to be, go through that person. There's state websites that they will maintain and verify that education, including some of the classes that are available. Everybody has minimums that they have to make. There's certain trainings that have to have, have to happen. So there's, there's a myriad of things that go on between tracking all that, also providing training for specific things, encouraging people who are down on training that we don't provide to attain that training, what they call an M&M, where they go to the hospital or hospital comes here occasionally. And that's a requirement of their certification. So there's just a whole bunch of different things. So I can't think of a number off the top of my head that is what you're looking for. Little challenging to peel out from their hours. His hours would be all administrative.
Right.
But I backfilled his hours with other folks to support us because we have need.
If we looked at his hours, we would know that they were understated.
They would be understated.
But just so we could have a ballpark idea.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But they would be understated, dramatically understated, especially recent.
Okay.
Chief?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification while you're on that subject. The individual or individuals that you bring in to fill that slot, from my understanding, are required to be paramedics, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, that's not a, just purely administrative. It actually has to be, they have to have the paramedic certification in order to have the dialogue with Medical Control, Coolidge Dickinson Hospital and OEMS. So that's a requirement of the position.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good question.
Do you have any further questions on the pay scale? Are we all set with this?
And if anybody does, please approach me because I'm more than happy to sit down. It might be a good idea to sit down with Accounting and, you know, go over it. I'm more than happy to do that because that's probably the appropriate time to really dissect. Because as I said, nothing has been done without all of our approval. And so there's, there's forensics that we could do for any individual.
Good. No, thanks for coming tonight and helping to clarify that. So we can move it along. Thanks.
I appreciate you all coming tonight. That was really important to the fire department and I appreciate your support for that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for bringing it to town.
Thank you for pulling it together.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Good. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right.
Okay, so let's go back to the beginning of new business. I think we're on, the first thing on the agenda here is the Public Safety Building Committee amended charge. And I think this is something we talked about last time. Ed was going to put together a little amendment to the existing charge for the Public Safety Building Committee to give them a little bit more direction as to what the next steps might be. So Ed, you want to take us through this? I don't think we need to read the current charge, but maybe talk about what you've amended here or what you're suggesting here?
Sure. And I basically did two things. I took the comments from the actual Public Safety Building Committee meeting that Reenie was kind enough to send me. And then I also went back to the senior center feasibility charge and pulled those items over. So on the second page, in the italicized font is, are the items that I brought, I added to the existing Public Safety Building Committee charge. So they are, worked with the town administrator to draft the SOW statement of work and developed a RFQ for a feasibility study for a planning and design consultant to be reviewed by the Select Board. Determine needed size of the new public safety building layout and location. Determine if any town buildings could be repurposed or expanded and identify the availability of any other suitable buildings or properties in town. Identify key elements that must be included in a public safety building design and additional secondary elements, if possible, to be included. Provide information as required to the selected consulting firm regarding site location and interior layout. And complete the feasibility study and determine potential design and construction costs. And I brought that forward as a draft.
And Public Safety hasn't seen this yet, right? They're.
Correct. They, the meeting was postponed.
Right.
The only thing I would like to add, because I really do think I want the Select Board very much involved. We're dealing with landowners. We're dealing with a major capital project potentially. I would just want to make sure that after this, it involves reporting to the Select Board, not necessarily just on the draft of the statement of work.
So the statement of work would be drafted for the RFQ? And that's, that's kind of what we did with public, with the senior senate committee, right? That's what they presented to us, was their statement of work, right, for the, for the RFQ? So that's what we're saying, I think, in this first one as well, right?
So just so you know, the chair of the committee, Sarah Stein, already created a draft of the RFQ based on the previous one plus what the senior center had done. So at the meeting coming up, the committee will be reviewing what she's put together. So that should happen pretty quickly. If the request is to come back to the Select Board before that gets sent out, that's going to happen pretty soon. I just want to make sure that after these other things happen, that there is involvement of a Select Board.
I wonder, just to that point, if there should be something inserted between the last two items? So after, complete the feasibility study and before the committee shall assess, similar to what's up above in that third paragraph, it's, you know, once this is done, a potential new charge or modified charge will come forward from the Select Board. So, you know, you get this far, then pause, and we reevaluate and determine next steps.
And that'll give more direction to the charge as well.
My thing under identify key elements that must be included in a public safety building, I would, the only change that I would make there is the two words, "that must", if those could be in bold for emphasis. Because I want to be clear that what we get back is not a key elements that may potentially include a wish list. These are the key elements that have to be in there. They, they could have another list of these are the nice-to-haves and the add-ons. But whatever list comes up, is this is the one that the committee feels we absolutely have to have. For example, if they come in and say, we have to have heated floors on the bays, well, then they probably have some backup for it. Okay, fine. But I know that was one of the issues with the last round. It was, seemed like there was so much.
It was like minimum requirements.
Right. What must be there?
Essential elements.
Yeah. So adding emphasis to "that must" bold or "must" whatever, to me would just clarify it.
Yeah, because I think that's where it went off the rails last time.
Other than that, it looks fine to me.
So was there any other wording change, Reenie, when you were mentioning about being reviewed by the Select Board in the first one? Did you want a wording change up there?
No, I actually, I was just letting people know that the RFQ is already in draft form and that will probably be finalized very soon. So if the, if the plan is to come and have another joint meeting with the Select Board, I just want to let people know that that will be something sooner rather than later because there's already a draft of the RFQ.
So if they're meeting soon, then maybe they would come again to us on the 30th or something? Or the early September one, whichever one, but to take a look at that.
I just want to make sure that before, well, they, it'll say, complete the feasibility study. Well, that'll be, and determine potential design and construction costs. Like, at what point will they be swinging back to the Select Board? That's going to be a three to six-month process. And it doesn't say anything about reporting back and getting an updated charge. So I just want to make sure that the Select Board is involved from the get-go and throughout. So I don't know whether at the end of this, it should say, complete the feasibility study, determine potential design and construction costs, report back to Select Board.
And report back to the Select Board, yeah. Yeah.
And, yeah, report back to Select Board for a modified charge, potential modified charge.
And there may not be, I mean, at that point in time, if they've already got the design, potential design and construction costs, then isn't it at that point that they would want to present this to the wider citizenry? Or not yet? I mean, at that point in time? If they have a design, I mean, at some point, we've got to start getting the public involved.
Exactly.
Well, I think that any company that's doing it will have public here, public meetings.
So I mean, there's got to be something there. So, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm fine with just saying, and report back to the Select Board. I mean, whether there's another charge or not.
And just to remind you that earlier on, it says, I'm pretty sure I remember reading where it says about public, educate, it says, the committee shall make efforts to educate the residents of the town of South Town on the need for this facility and to understand current perception of the need. So that's kind of already part of it.
Right. Okay.
I just think adding something at the end there, because that'll be three to six months after.
I think adding "and report back to Select Board" is fine.
Yep.
We've got, so up on the second one, determine the needed size, layout and location. And then we've got, on the fourth or fifth one down, we're talking again, site location and interior layout. Are those the same? Those almost sound a little duplicative. I mean, number two and number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Or what were you trying to distinguish there, Ed, between those two?
Actually, they're copied right from the senior center feasibility charge, so.
I mean, this one is talking, I mean, they, they need to, so whether they're going to go visit other places like we had talked about last meeting, so that they can have an idea of how big a place they need, want, you know, what those minimum features are, their requirements are. But then I guess, now that I read this again, number five is then, when there is a consulting firm, they've got to be very involved with the consulting firm. It just seems like those two could be, I don't know, collapsed together or something.
I agree. And I think it says locations because feasibility committee, the feasibility or the company is going to be looking at more than one location.
Yes. Yeah.
And could I suggest, I mean, when they go visit other facilities, they should be looking at comparable towns. You can't look at something that's a Taj Mahal and, you know, with a population of 26,000. We need to look at comparable.
Well, they could look at it. They just have to adjust it. You know, if they want to go look at it.
They have to shrink it.
They just have to shrink it, right?
I think it would be good to have that be explicit. I mentioned at the last meeting that part of the, one of the things that was the most helpful to me on the senior center side is actually going and looking at places, even if they weren't exactly the same size. We learned a lot from South Hadley, is, you know, review. I wanted to bring in the Williamsburg folks. We've got eight documents from Williamsburg. I'd like to bring them in and just have them talk about what they go through, how they get approved, all of that. So I would, you know, I think it would be great if it actually said.
Or you could say something like, you know, discuss with other public safety committees of, you know, comparable-sized towns, you know, so discuss or go visit if, you know, if appropriate or something to go, you know, actually lay eyes on and see what it looks like. And then that may help inform their decisions about what is really necessary versus what, what could be maybe a second, second reality. So maybe just something in there, just saying.
Research other public safety.
Yeah, I thought that was maybe.
Complexes.
Okay.
And comparably sized towns.
Yeah, just comparably, comparable-sized towns and visit as necessary or something. Whatever, along those lines. Is that generally okay? Think that'll move them along enough from what they were looking for? Okay. All right.
Motion to approve as amended.
All right.
Was there something that John wanted to add between the last two or something?
Well, that's reporting back to the Select Board. I'm good with that.
Yeah. Yeah. So motion on the table to approve as amended. Have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any opposed?
John, Joy seconded.
John and Joy. Okay.
Oh, the JJ's.
The JJ's.
Yes.
That's why we're on the ends. The book ends to keep this process moving.
Here to get things done.
Keeping the rest of us in, in line here, yeah. Okay, let's keep on moving. ARPA project status reports. So as you know, we had designed, tried to design an ARPA quarterly report. The quarterly report actually went out after the July date. But anyway, we had made a special request for those. We had made a special request for those projects that had been approved early on to do a first one, especially since their work was essentially done, and to try and get a quick report in for the July-August timeframe. And then those that have been recently approved on the ARPA monies, their first quarterly report will be due in October. So we have, just to go through, we have a report in on the contact tracing, $9,000, that's been completed, no money remaining. The Southampton COVID clinics that were back when, this was for police detail and custodial fees, $732 also completed. Moving on to the COVID rapid test kits, this was a number of kits that we had gotten early on before we were able to get the recent free ones. So we had $26,448 to purchase 1,392 test kits, and those were distributed to the schools, council on aging, various employees, local businesses, group homes, et cetera. And that has also been certified as completed. The first congregational church driveway replacement for $22,500, that was probably the first one, almost, completed, I think. That has been done, and no funds remaining on that one. That was an exact quote, I think, when we received it. The town, essential town employees' premium pay for $271,442.20, that has been paid out to all those town employees that were eligible for this. That was paid by the end of June, so that one is also complete. Compensation for lost time off for the fire chief due to COVID-19 in the amount of $9,764.71, that has also been completed and paid off by the end of June. And then lastly, the ARPA survey technical report, or not lastly, ARPA survey technical report, this was for some IT support to develop the Survey Monkey survey, and about ARPA desires and priorities, $300 also completed. And then the Hampton Pond sewer plan update, $12,800 also complete. And that has gotten a draft, a draft report has been developed on that, and in tie-in bond is working on preliminary costs for the alternatives on those. Okay, so those are all ones that have gone through the system, got their money, have completed the activities that they were awarded for. There's just a couple others, I think, that are in process, and that's the telephone voiceover IP for $2,022. That's in process. Systems are being worked on, the phones have been ordered and shipped, and we're going to be getting some installation and training and so forth, announced fairly soon on that. And then the employee credentialing system for $3,279, that too has been ordered and shipped. So those two are in process, they're not complete yet, but have had a good beginning, and thank you, Ed, for the report on those. And I think that was everybody I had, so.
The credentialing system?
Yes, the credentialing system, yeah. So that's, that gives everybody a good idea of, you know, we've tried to have a process here where we've awarded the ARPA funds, and this is a quarterly report, so these ones we won't see again, but there will be others that we had awarded that we do expect to see some progress reports on until they are complete. So for those of you, letters have gone out, Judy has sent the letters and the quarterly reports out to people, so that they know that they have a report due, the next one is in October. Okay?
Were there any more applications?
That was going to be my next point. While we're on ARPA for just a second, I think, I would like to just get the druthers of the committee. We have, I believe, two, maybe three? Two that I'm aware of, from Parks and one of the other businesses that I've heard about. I'm thinking that's maybe all. I'm not sure if there's a third one or not. But there were two that have come in-house since then, so I didn't know if we wanted to start looking at a second round, when we want to do that. We do have our second tranche of money, is that right, Ed, or did it come in yet? It was, I think.
I'm going to break it down into four, we've received the third.
The third, okay, right, we had a small one, yeah, earlier, okay. So we have.
I expect the fourth within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, okay. So we do have a couple that have already come in, do we, you know, my intent had been to kind of wait and get a grouping of them, so we had a, you know, a handful to review, but at the same time, I don't necessarily want to penalize the couple that have come in that are going to be hanging out waiting until we get other applications. So what's anybody's thought? We could.
I know the Public Safety Building Committee will be submitting more of the feasibility study.
Right.
I don't know if anybody else has any other ones that are pending.
Yeah. Do we want to pick this up maybe the first meeting in September? Or we could, I mean, we could deal with these couple in the next meeting if you wanted to? I mean, what's, what's anybody's druthers on it?
Do you know if they're anticipating repairing the tennis courts this year?
Well, I don't know about the timing of it, in terms of the weather and whatever, but that is one of the applications that is in, yeah.
Yeah, I would think the nature of the work would dictate when we want to address the application, just not to like roll it off.
Might have to look at that application just to see, I think Judy told me it was in, so we'll take a look at that and see. Would anybody be opposed to looking at the two that are in next meeting, or the first meeting in September, or?
I think we should look at them the next meeting. I was under the impression we were, after we set that deadline afterwards, we'd be reviewing them on a rolling basis.
Yeah, I think we kind of said that, we were waiting sort of to establish a round two, which is what we're in. And again, I was just assuming that we'd have more to look at, but that's what we have right now. So just to remind anybody who's out there, the application is on the homepage of the website. For those of you that are interested, all the awards, the discussion that we've had about the ARPA awards is on the select board page on the website. There's a couple of charts there, you can find that information. There's a tracking chart of when people applied, when they got their response letter, and then our discussion at the meeting about how and what we were thinking about as we were awarding or talking about these various projects. So it's all out there on the website. At some point in time, once we get into our website design, we'll have things in a more visible place where everything's kind of more easily grouped, so you can find it easier. But they are out there if people are interested in looking. So again, the application itself, online, on the homepage, and the reports so far are on the select board page. Okay? Anything else? Okay, so let's assume we'll pick up those two next meeting. Okay, good, thank you. Next, we have the FRTA designee appointment.
I make a motion that we appoint the town administrator for one more year to represent the town of Southampton on the FRTA.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? If not, could I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And thank you, Ed.
Don't hear any opposed?
Thank you for stepping up.
Yes, there we go.
My pleasure.
Just don't drive the bus, okay?
I will not.
All right, next, town-owned vehicle marking slash town seal by law discussion. So I think this was something maybe John, you had raised, if you want to pick this up a little bit?
Yeah, so this had come up during the last budget cycle, and it was suggested to me that the best way to do that is by bylaw. So I came up with this draft that I stole from another community, and then Ed came up with, he stole one from another community as well. And I think for purposes, we should just refer it to the bylaw committee, and I'd be happy to come in before that committee and have a deeper discussion. But in general, I think assets of the town belong to the taxpayers, and therefore, with very few exceptions, i.e. the police chief or an unmarked police car, they should all carry the town seal and have the town of Southampton name on it.
Okay. All right, and is there, is this better done as a bylaw as opposed to a policy?
So the rationale that was given, which I don't disagree with, is that we have assets, vehicles out there that are controlled by other elected bodies. So that don't necessarily answer the select board, so if we made a bylaw that had the citizens put it in place, it therefore applies to all departments in the town.
Okay, that makes sense.
Hard to argue with that. Okay, all right, so I'm gathering, what you're suggesting is that these drafts would come, we'd have you come to the bylaw advisory committee at some point and talk about this and have them work on that.
Sure.
So we'll schedule something probably in September?
My calendar should be free, then, yes.
And invite someone to come in and talk with us, and we'll look at this version, and as I said, we'll explore others.
See what other towns.
Compare and contrast, and if one fits us, okay.
All right, anybody have any?
Just want to mention that I wasn't really sure when this was in the packet exactly what was going to be happening with it. I thought at the time that it actually came from the bylaws committee, because that's what typically has happened. So I just wanted to bring to attention, like, they're so different, one, I just want to say that for me, the shorter one says everything, or says enough, but I just want to mention that if you look down about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 lines, it says local peace officers, which is kind of interesting. There's also a typo on the number 3, where it says, "There is T-H-E-I-R."
Got it.
Their assigned vehicle, yes.
All right, good.
Well, we'll catch all of that when we go through, and, you know, we may modify this slightly, again, because we want essentially the read to be the same from article to article, more level and vocabulary.
Right, no, my sole intent was to start the conversation.
Yeah. And I definitely support it being a bylaw, thank you.
All right, I hear basically consensus on that, so that's okay, we will move in that direction. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get it going.
All right, next topic here, the COA ARPA grant. So this is a state earmark from Senator Velez's office, and just to mention, I think, Ed, what's happening with this, is a ceremony?
Yes, on August 29th, at the senior center, and my memory is working from earlier tonight, it's at 10:00 AM.
Okay, all right, and so we would be invited for that? And that doesn't have any particular use restrictions on it that we know of, or?
I think we'll find out, I haven't found any, I think we may find out more about it on that 29th. I know there's one other community that got it and utilized it to, my memory is, used it to purchase an electric transportation van for the senior center.
Not with $25,000?
Fifty, it's 50.
Fifty thousand.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so this was Senator Velez that had put this in, I think he's done this for a couple of different communities, so thank you to the senator for putting in an earmark from, this was several months ago, I believe, this is one that, this goes back to almost like last summer, I think.
The COA board said they want to discuss it at the next meeting in September, some suggestions on spending it.
Great, okay, well, wonderful, that's great. Okay, so we will try to be there, those of us that can be there for the big check handover, that would be nice. All right, we've already dealt with the fire EMS issue, so then we're down to the TIF agreement, annual report J and E precision. So, Ed, do you want to sort of walk us through this a little bit?
Sure, so this is their annual report, which originally the select board had laid out the parameters of what they would like in it. So basically, back in 2017, they had 80 employees on July 1st, 2017, in total, 26 of them were Southampton residents. The end of that fiscal year, which is June 30th, 2018, it had dropped down a little bit, they had 79 total employees and 24 Southampton residents. Then going forward to June 30th, 2019, for that fiscal year, it increased to 84 total employees and 29 Southampton residents. And then as that moved forward to June 30th, 2020, the total number of employees increased to 97, Southampton resident employees dropped to 26. Then during fiscal year 20, June 30th, 2021, the end of that fiscal year, that had climbed to 115 total employees, and Southampton residents, employees had dropped to 25. And then going forward to June 30th, 2022, at the current time, the total number of employees had stayed the same at 115, and the Southampton residents that are employees had increased to 28. And then throughout the course of 2020, one J and E paid a total of $2,767.64, and water bills, motor vehicle excise taxes totaled $391.28, and water totaled $22,376.36.
And just to sort of recap this for anybody who may be listening, so this agreement was signed in 2018, in January of 2018, and it was basically in consideration for, basically a property tax incentive in return for capital investment in a facility, as well as employment, increased employment for town workers in general. The, I believe the idea in the TIF agreement was to create 15 to 20 permanent jobs based upon their constructing and opening a new addition at the facility at 115 Valley Road, and that is what we have before us in terms of what's been happening. And then with this agreement, it was a five, it was a five-year agreement, was it exemption? Tax exemption for five years, where in 2019 fiscal, 2019, it was 100% tax exempt, fiscal 20, 80% tax exempt, fiscal 21, 60% tax exempt, and 22, 40% tax exempt, and now fiscal, entering fiscal 23, we're going to be at 20% tax exempt and an FY 24, this will be back to full taxation.
And that would be on the 7,200 square foot building, which they had added on.
On the addition, correct, not on the entire business, but on the addition that was built, right, to accommodate this. So I think you and I had talked, what we had here on the report was mention of tax and water bills, and basically motor vehicle excise and so forth, and water, and I guess, I was personally wondering why there wasn't a reference to property tax. So that was what I had had Ed do a little bit of research on.
In each of those years?
Yeah, yeah, just because it seems like that was.
Did you find what the property tax, they're supposed to report also property tax, so on here, if you add up excise and water, it totals the 2767. So they haven't reported on the property.
The property tax is not listed in their report itself, yeah.
They never have.
Yeah, they haven't in past, in previous years. This report, I went back and looked at the first couple of years since I've been on select board, and the report was very similar to this. So the property tax had not been a request, I guess, of select board per se, but.
Well, it is, because this is what was specifically asked for on the number C, J and E financial contribution to the town, including property tax, motor vehicle excise tax, water and sewer fees. So I'm wondering if that's something that you can get for us.
Well, Ed has spent a little time looking at that.
However, I'm going to tell you, it will not correlate to this addition.
What do you mean?
We send one property tax bill for the entire property.
So.
It's not broken down, so you will see a property tax for 7,200.
I'm the liaison to assessor, so I know there are two property cards, one of them is listed at 107 Valley Road, and the other one is 115, and the addition is 115. So is it, so the other thing that's important to know is that not long after this was put into place, the property, the business was sold, and part of the agreement said that they were going to notify us if the business was sold, and they didn't. And this, the select board discussed it at the time and decided that we were not going to write an appeal that they, that the project be decertified. So just so everybody knows, we are not the sort of governing body of this. If you look at the very end, it says, "The town reserves the right to seek decertification of the project should J and E not attain or sustain 80% of the investment employment goals." So we apply to the economic, what is it, the economics?
Development council.
Development council, and they're the ones that would decide to decertify. So it was discussed that we weren't provided notification that the business was sold, but we are, their tax, you know, break was really supposed to be on the addition only.
Just on the addition, right.
Right.
So that would be the 115 Valley Road, and so I think that we are entitled to get that information.
It'll help. I'll check on the 115 because everything I've got is on the 107.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean.
The online assessor card shows the valuation increasing by 20% every year.
It does.
It does, for 115.
For 115.
Oh, great. Thank you, Jen.
And that's good to know.
Okay.
Well, you don't see that number online. You'd have to go to the Treasury.
But not on the 107.
I'm sorry, Francine asked if it shows the tax dollar amount paid. That's not on the assessor card. It just tells you the value. You have to apply.
But it does say progressive increase.
Right.
But not on the 107, just on the 115?
2020, it was 153. 2021, it was 219. 2022, it was 285.
Okay. Okay. So moving up.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to have that.
So, I mean, yeah, so we've got a specific address, right, of the 115 Valley Road. So we weren't looking at the main, the main business, just the addition.
Which will make it much easier because on that.
You were thinking that there was just one tax bill for both properties, or?
Well, I didn't realize there was a second property because on the 107, there's a valuation for, we'll call it the main building, there's an evaluation for two outbuildings, one of which is 7,500 square foot, which I assumed and now I got corrected, was actually the one that they added. And then that has a land value on it. So the fact that this one actually has been carved out separately, that will make it much easier for me to.
Well, how about then, just, you know, they've done the basics here, but how about for the next meeting, if you or they can provide us with that information?
I'll be happy to.
That would be good, just so we know. So we're entering into the last year of this, so it'd be good to know that we've all, you know, abided by the agreement in terms of the percentages and the tax breaks, et cetera, here. And, you know, the number of Southampton residents has been employed, has been relatively steady, somewhere between the 24 and 29 mark from time to time, up and down a little bit, but.
Thanks, Rainey. I never would have figured that one out on my own.
There you go. Okay. So, any other questions about that? If not, I think this is the only TIF agreement we have in town, right? This is the only business that has benefited from this, so it behooves us to just understand it better. Good. All right. The next issue I'm going to have to recuse myself on, this is the tire dump cleanup local escrow account closeout. And I will move out of here because this directly involves myself and my family. So I'm going to let John take over this portion. And you all can give me a high sign when I can come back.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
No problem. Well, Ed, there's nothing in the packet, so what would you like us to know?
Well, basically, there's a tire dump account which has been under the control of the Board of Health. We have now sold that property. So the, one of the select board members had asked about what happens to that balance. So my understanding is this came from a number of different funds. It predates our current electronic financial software. So we would have to ask Bradley and possibly Jen to look through their records and even their paper records to, and maybe the Board of Health has this too, of ascertain, okay, where did the funds come from, at what time? How, you know, how were they spent out of, you know, which account first or whatever to get to a point where, okay, whatever funding is left in that account, does it need to go back to somewhere where we got it from? Does it get closed out to the general fund, what have you?
Do you know the fund number, the balance?
Yes, I can, I'm going to step in here. So the Fowles family, who owned the farm before Fletcher's, was authorized by the Conservation Commission at the time to use tires in their property to control erosion. Subsequent to that, and again, I'm going to give the short version because I wasn't involved, but after that period of time, the Board of Health basically mandated that they remove the tires. And so I believe Mr. and Mrs. Fowles were basically doing what they were authorized to do by the Conservation Commission and then were later told that what they did was not okay and the tires had to be removed. They had to put the farm into auction and bankruptcy in order to actually pay for the removal of the tires. The Fletchers bought the farm in auction and $153,000 was put into an escrow account. And the account number I have.
And do we hold the escrow account? Is it on the town?
Yeah. So it's, let me get my glasses. It's account number, and it's in the, some of the paperwork we have, So basically, at the same time, a grant was obtained for $600,000 to clean up the tire dump. That's when part of the eight-acre gully was sold to the town because we were in the position to be able to get the grant funds, the $600,000. Unfortunately, our attempt, so the grant attempt, was not successful, which is why then we did sell that property back to Fletchers because then they were able to come up with a system for rectifying the problem, which I understand has been successful and that they are on stage three of four to actually solve the problem of the gully that's been created from the erosion. So now that the, you know, the Fletchers now own the land back and the money that was used, almost all of the $153,000 was used for, to an environmental company. I think we used some of the funds for possibly legal or other fees when we sold the land back. Now the remaining amount in that escrow account is $16,000. I feel on some level it's the right thing to do, if not reparation, to return that to the family. That was actually a very painful time in the history of Southampton in terms of this family going into bankruptcy and after doing something that they were authorized to do. And so this account sits there right now with $16,000 in it. When I was in the Board of Health, we received a letter in 2011 from the Fowles family asking for an accounting of what's been spent. And there was some information provided to them at the time. And my understanding is that the majority of the funds was used to pay an environmental company along with the $600,000 in the grant. So it's very difficult to get all of the history of all of these payments because it preceded our existing software program.
But you believe that this was a condition or as the result of a bankruptcy filing?
It was definitely a result of the bankruptcy of $153,000.
So then there's definitely a public record.
And so there's a, it was sent to escrow, and I just feel like escrow is basically used if you need the money and then what's not used, you return. And I just feel like now, yeah.
So I think the next step would be the inquiry in Springfield with the bankruptcy court.
Yeah.
For that file because it's, you can jump in, Joy. But I would think it's going to spell out what happens with the money.
Exactly. What happens with the money, with the terms. Yeah, when, usually when funds are in escrow, there's a judgment made for where they go. I don't know if we have any purview of where they go.
And if, hopefully, it's, well, not if it spells it out.
No, yeah, not if it's through bankruptcy court.
What is typical under those circumstances, do you know? Or is it typical?
For?
What happens to escrow when?
To escrowed funds?
Yeah.
Usually if there's a bankruptcy, the trustee of the estate, the bankruptcy, of the bankruptcy court is determining where those funds are being diverted to, to, you know, pay off debtors, I mean creditors, et cetera.
Okay. And then once there's a balance and those funds have been expended for its intended purpose, what happens usually to the remaining funds is, does it?
Depends. It depends.
So what would you say is the next step then in terms of just investigating this further?
Finding out what's happening in bankruptcy court.
Do we have a rough idea what year?
I would contact the trustee, like, if we could, if there's a, if they did file for bankruptcy, then there's probably a trustee who's dictating what is going on with the estate, with the funds and the assets.
So we would.
You know roughly what year? The window of time?
This all happened?
Yeah, the bankruptcy piece. Because the filing will be by year. It could narrow down the window to look.
I'm almost positive, and again, I'm going to the Board of Health meeting tomorrow. Geraldine Swanson was here at the time.
Okay.
And I, when I was in the Board of Health, one half of the many, many filing cabinets in the Board of Health office were the tire dump. That's how big it was and how involved it was and how significant it is to the town. So I can start by just asking for a document through the Board of Health. And also, not that long ago, somebody who was a previous resident of the Board of Health had actually sent, had sent me all the information that had happened around that time and including, it included some of the bankruptcy paper.
So again, that might be the area to look. You know, the Board of Selectmen through Rainey is asking an inquiry of the Board of Health if they have anything related to the bankruptcy filing.
Okay.
And then that will, perhaps they have the whole document and then that'll, then we can just have Ed do an interpretation or KP Law or whatever.
That bankruptcy document will then say how the funds should be expended and what would happen if further, if it's no longer needed or something. Okay. So I'll start by inquiring that of the Board of Health tomorrow when I go to the meeting. Okay.
Anything else on this? Don't think so.
No.
Okay.
I think that I have to make a, Ed, I have to go out anyways. I have to make a phone call.
Okay.
Oh, text, no, text me your email address because I got the detail and then I'll forward it over to you.
I think it was 2001 is what I have here is, 2001, I think, is when it had 153-22699. All right. We will pick back up. So any other business that can't wait until the next meeting?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Hello. Go ahead.
We have a somewhat of a time-sensitive matter related to the Highway Department that cannot wait, well, potentially cannot wait for the normal process of it flowing through P P B. So the department had reached out to me. I had a conversation with him, shared whatever my reservations were, but then asked him to speak with the town administrator to see if there were any, if the town administrator had any objections or anything to that. But I don't know what the outcome of that conversation was, but I did receive an email from him, CCing the town administrator, asking if it was at all possible to bring the matter up tonight. And in broad terms, there's an employee who has left our employment, gave notice, served out the notice and left on good terms, went to work somewhere else and would prefer to come back. There's a clause in the P P P manual that says that if you separate employment, and I'm not quoting it, I'm going off memory, that if you separate employment and opt to come back in under 90 days, you shall come, do so if we bring you back, do so at whatever spot you left, meaning seniority. But you have to execute that within the first 90 days of separation. Hence, I believe the 90 days is August 20th.
Right, which I originally figured if the P P B had met at their regular meeting time on the 18th, would have been able to address this under an emergency order and sign off on it. That's essentially true. I did confer with Randall and I told him what my opinion of that clause was. And it's, doesn't, the hard part of the clause is it doesn't say if you bring them back in under 90 days, they shall go to their spot and not lose their benefits or the seniority. It says if they return past 90 days, they shall not receive their. So my interpretation of that, well, my interpretation of that is if they're not going to receive them, if they come, their spot and their seniority, if they return after 90 days, that if they return before 90 days, they would get their same spot and have all their seniority and vacation time put back on the books.
And I assume that position is still vacant?
It is. There's an active posting. So it meets all the other standards. It's just because this one falls in under the 90 days, the question is, you know, they wouldn't be coming in at step one. They'd be coming in at the period, at the point that they left.
Are you looking to do like an emergency?
So at this point, they've forwarded a two-week emergency appointment, which would then cover until, because P P B is not meeting this Thursday due to a scheduling conflict. We're meeting next Thursday. And the full appointment. So the two-week emergency and then this one. And I can go into details if the select board wants to entertain it or if the select board doesn't want to, then we can just pass on it, but.
What is the position?
It's the operator. Equipment operator. He holds all the valid licenses and credentials and.
Randall would very much like to have him back.
And what's the, what's his name?
Jeremy LaRoche.
Okay, yeah, I remember that. He wasn't the more recent one that left. He was the one prior to that. Okay.
Well, does this, an emergency appointment would be equivalent to a full-time hire?
Correct, because if we execute the emergency order, then that gives him the time to give notice at his current.
Position.
Knowing that he has employment, you know, he doesn't want to give notice if you're on the fence, which is understandable.
Yeah.
So doesn't the department head have the discretion to bring someone in at a step and level based on their licenses and all that?
But you wouldn't get vacation time.
Seniority-wise, yes, correct.
Some of that, yeah.
Where is it referenced in the personnel thing? Do you know offhand?
Yeah, I just had it. It is.
Like on a termination?
And I only have the page, but letter M. Termination is the cessation of employment with the town for any reason. An employee other than a police officer under section 1-4F who is in good standing at the time of termination is eligible to be considered for reemployment by the town. However, after a 90-day hiatus, a returning employee shall be regarded as new hire for the purposes of calculating benefits, seniority, and will be required to complete another 90-day probationary period under the definition section.
I think that the sentence before that is if they're in good standing at the time of termination is eligible to be considered for reemployment by the town.
How long had he been in our employment, you know, before he left?
I think it says enough.
He's on the current employment sheet under, in a different department, so we could find his hire date.
So he is, he's not, he is still with the town but in a different department?
Part, yeah, he's the one who works part-time in one department, but not scheduled.
Oh, okay.
At the, at the P D.
Yeah, okay.
So.
All right, so if this would be.
Does that consider him to be like currently employed, even though it's part-time status?
So what would, what would that do, you know, if he, he'd be coming back full-time as a machine operator, right?
Equipment operator in the Highway Department.
So then he would leave the part-time.
Well, the P D is non-scheduled, just filling in. There's not an overtime calculation there. But I believe the P D portion is going to end July 1st anyways because of the Bridge Academies.
July 1st.
Right. So some officers are fading out over the three years depending where their last name falls.
Yeah.
So his rate will actually be higher than it was when he left?
Why?
And he, he seeded July 1, right, with the new fiscal year?
He would get the COLA adjustment.
All right, well, what's anybody think?
I'm fine with it.
I mean, personally, I think winter's coming and the department's short-staffed.
Well, that's the other thought.
The department had. The department head is in full support of it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Town administrator is in full support of it also, for the record.
All right, let's have a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency P C F for Jeremy?
Yep.
LaRoche?
LaRoche.
Yes.
LaRoche, sure, LaRoche.
LaRoche.
LaRoche for the Highway Department as a.
Forty-hour equipment operator, step two, 2292 per hour.
What'd he say?
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? If not, could I have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so approved.
That was just for the emergency?
Yes.
Yeah. And then you guys were meeting.
I'm assuming P Q B is not going to be unhappy with us.
Yeah, so we've done this before P Q B, but then you're going to take this to P Q B and then do the paperwork for the, for the regular position and bring that back to us on the 30th then? Or?
Correct. Yep, we can make that, we can do that. Because, yeah, there is one question I have that I can't get answered tonight, so I'm, I'm fine with doing it in two steps.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
I can go look for that paperwork for you to sign it.
Yeah, that's okay. All right, any other business that can't wait? I've just got two questions.
I have just one.
Okay, go ahead.
Can we add the Doers Green Community Grant to that agenda for the next meeting? And can we also do the revenue expense report for the next meeting?
Yep. As you know, we have the, the revenue report now through May, so that should be possibly. We had, we had said that we wanted to.
You said by August 30th we'll have.
Do that by the 30th anyway, yep.
If, if we're adding things, under the pending items, so we don't lose track of it. The fiscal year '22 audit assignment and whether or not we're.
Right.
If we're going to go out to bid. Additionally, the wage study. If we want to get that in before budget season.
Right.
Just more like status updates.
Yep.
Good points. Will do, okay. Thank you for that. Just two things on my, my mind, and they're really kind of questions. Back on, you're aware on the, on the landowner letter, so back on the whole public safety and senior center, as you know, we had received, we had the six or five properties that we had talked about, letters were sent out. We received three responses back and no response from the one on Moosebrook Road and no response from the one on Clark Street, Marmon Keystone. And as I was driving by Clark Street the other day, I realized too, that when we, when I sent them out, I sent them out in terms of Marmon Keystone. I sent it to the local office and to the corporate office, but I didn't think about sending it to the Realtor. And there's obviously a very big sale sign on that property. And I'm wondering whether Select Board thinks that I should also send that same letter to the Realtor, because I don't know who.
They must be in contact with a decision maker.
Somewhere, I mean, I was fairly sure that the local people wouldn't have the decision-making power, but, you know, 30-day turnaround for a corporation may not be, I don't know. I just feel like I have an open-ended thing here. And I'd rather, and including the one on Moosebrook, frankly, if I were to do that, if you thought that that was wise to do, I would want to include the other property on Moosebrook and send them a reminder just saying, you know, we haven't heard from you. Would you please answer yes or no? And then we can just close the loop and we're done.
I think that's a great idea.
I would call the Realtor and get their email and scan and send the letter through email, because if they have to get, they probably have to get their client's permission and the fastest way is through email. They probably would forward it over to whoever they need to from Marmon Keystone versus.
So to call the Realtor and get the Realtor's?
Get the Realtor's name and then they can, their email.
Yeah.
And then send it to them through email. And then they can forward it to whoever.
To their client.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Very good point.
That seems like the fastest way of getting that done.
Okay, I mean, it just, it just feels like we've got an open end. We've gone through this process and we know that everybody got them. And I just rather would have a definitive no or.
Or at least make the attempt, the second attempt.
Yeah, so is that okay?
Yeah, I agree.
All right.
Really good idea.
All right, then I will, I will work on, I'll just send another, you know, just a reminder, just saying, you know, we haven't heard from you. We just appreciate knowing one way or another and.
I think it's good to close the loop on these properties. It was a pressure point from last time, though, in terms of who we hadn't heard from, but I think it's a really good idea.
Yeah, well, it didn't even dawn on me about the Realtor. I mean, there's a, there's a huge for-sale sign down there, Marmon Keystone area. So I thought, oh, dummy, why didn't I think about that? So I didn't, but I will. And then the second thing is, you've all seen, I think, an email correspondence. We've had a, a letter in probably a good three weeks now from a local beekeeper. Mark Rezniak, I believe his name is, and talking about issues with small, small hive beekeepers in town and competition with large hive keepers in town, et cetera, and wanting to sort of get the ag commission involved. Many of them have either said, I don't want to be involved in it because I've got the hives on my property, or, yes, you know, here's some information about beekeeping, et cetera. It is one that I have hesitated to actually formally respond to, and I'm wondering if anybody has any particular suggestions here, because I, I didn't know that it would be useful for the person to come and, and just talk about the fact that he believes that his hives are being crowded out by other, by proximity to several other large beekeeping enterprises in town. And it seems like this is a kind of a local beekeeper ag commission kind of discussion that ought to.
Yes.
To happen amongst themselves. And I'm not sure that it's going anywhere yet. I know I've seen a couple of letters back and forth and people have put in various details, but basically this person who had written in originally wanted us to consider putting in some limitations, maybe even a bylaw about, you know, the number of hives somebody can keep in terms of distance to other beekeepers' hives, et cetera.
I read the letter. I assumed there was a backstory to it that I wasn't aware of, so I just.
Totally sure.
Waited for direction, but they're a resident of the town, right?
Yes, they are.
So I, I feel we should acknowledge them. I mean, they are a voter and taxpayer, a resident of the town. But I almost think it just needs to start with the Agricultural Commission and perhaps if we officially refer the matter to them for a public hearing.
Yeah.
And to take action.
I mean, the, the challenge is a couple of the members of the ag commission actually have hives on their property, and so they may end up deciding that they want to recuse themselves from the whole discussion.
Yes, it may very well end up that the Agricultural Commission, if that happens or should happen, ends up being the two alternate members being the ones that are left.
Yeah.
So should we appoint a voting member of the Select Board as a liaison?
Oh, yeah. We did receive a response letter as well, another letter. We received two from a nut, from one of the other larger bee hive keepers.
Right, 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 right.
Who was also a member of the Hampden County Bee Association, which also plays a lot into it in the background, I'm going to say.
So just.
And, yeah, and as someone who, who, we keep bees on our home and we're, we're also hobby beeists, I, I think there's a lot of, it's a, there's a lot going on there interpersonally and within that community. And so I guess I think it should be an ag conversation, but as you said, a lot of those people are, have to recuse themselves.
Yeah, so.
Well, would they, they potentially could recuse themselves from voting.
Yeah.
But they could participate in discussion, because there's no independent financial gain one way or the other to them, right?
Right, I mean, they're, they're the technical experts, those that have, you know.
Well, I would argue that there's a potential, either negative or positive, financial implication.
Yeah. They're hosting bees on their property, they're getting money.
They're getting money for putting the hives on their property, probably, let alone, you know, the, the person who's trying to harvest honey, but.
I do want to, I do want to mention, just because though the hives, from my understanding, that are on those properties are there to pollinate versus making actual honey, which is what this business is do, is this, these larger businesses, one business is making honey, they're not doing it in Southampton, they're doing it in other places, specifically down south. They're not doing it up here, they're up here and on these different farms to pollinate their crops. There's a big difference between pollination and honey retrieval. That, as I'm saying, it is a very technical hobby and a very technical business. It's, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's beyond, I think, the Select Board's, like, expertise.
Right, and I, and I think, you know, M D R.
Oh, yeah.
Also doesn't have any rules and regulations. I've tried to search on state ag sites and I'm not finding any particular rules and regulations. There's something that we were given as part of the correspondence from Vermont that does talk about a certain number of distancing and so forth. But I, I think the issue from the person who wrote us originally, understanding that there's a difference between the honey, honey harvesters and the pollinator harvester people, pollinator harvester, pollinator, oh, gosh, I can't talk, you know what I mean? Understanding if there's a difference there in terms of purpose of, of the hives and so forth. The issue I think that came up from the person who wrote us was that because there are so many of them densely populated, that that is infringing upon the foraging ability of the bees in general to go find all the necessary food that they may need to be surviving. So the, the thought I had, and, and I'm not sure that I'm really wanting to do this, but the thought I had is that maybe, I don't know who would come, but we could have an invitation for, say, perhaps myself, maybe Joy, you're maybe involved in this, so I'm not sure.
I think that an invitation needs to be also sent to the Hampden County Bar, so Bee Association.
Bar Association.
Lawyers and bees, lawyers and bees.
Bars and bees.
Hampden County Bee Association, because I think that, I mean, the second letter we did receive was from a member of that. I think it's also implicating another member of that. The training that this person received is from the Hampden County Bee Association.
So I think to try and, what I was going to suggest is just have, not, not to have it come before Select Board per se, but just to have an informal meeting of some sort. I'm not sure how, but I mean, perhaps maybe Ed and I could try to sit down with some collective group of them and just hash it out in the, in the break room or something and see what, what some of the real issues are.
In general, other hobby beekeepers in Southampton, besides just one, this one, I want to, I, you know, there, I know there's lots of them, and if that is an issue, then we can address that with the citizens of Southampton. I want to hear out this one person, but I know that there's many people in Southampton that keep bees.
So it may be an initial meeting, but then the next step could be like a, you know, a public information meeting where other people, other beekeepers are invited, but just to understand clearly, you know, what, what the issues are and if they're moving forward to resolve this issue or it's.
Possibly having an informal session.
Yeah.
With no more than two Select Board members there. And, and at least one member of the Agricultural Commission that doesn't feel conflicted. So the three, an informal chit-chat, and then maybe suggest that, that we, we could organize some sort of educational taping through East Hampton Media where both sides could present their case. And it sounds like, at least based, based on what I know right now, I, I don't think, I'm, I'm not in a position to recommend any bylaw change, but you could provide information to them via the town clerk and how a citizen could go about moving forward with a bylaw. And part of that would be educating. You know, if you, if you want to show them, you'll give them options and avenues.
Might be a ways down the road.
Yeah, it could be.
I think I should remind people that there's a huge resource locally too, in terms of bees relative to like UMass and, so it might be, that we might be seeking out some assistance elsewhere.
All right, well, let's, if, are people in generally okay with the idea of trying to get some little mini-group together informally and just sort of see, and taking Joy's comment in there about maybe the Hampden County Bee, Bee Association and, you know, whomever else that could come and provide some technical expertise and enlightenment on the subject here? Because it's, again, it's just kind of hanging out there and I don't want the person who wrote to us to feel like we've not heard.
Right.
Yeah, that would be great. I think that's a great first step. So thank you for, um.
Yeah, well.
Motion for that?
Well, I'm sure, why not?
All right, I'll move that, you're willing? Are you willing to be biased?
I'll move that we have an informal meeting.
Informal meeting involving the person that wrote the letter, inviting Agricultural Commission members and members from the Select Board and, and Ed, and discuss ways of moving forward and understanding what the issues are.
Yeah, okay.
Second that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to second it.
Oh, frenzy did.
Oh, okay, but I just also, on the preface, that I also have, I've heard from others in regards to this topic and that's why I'm supporting it, because it's, it's created some buzz.
Yes. Very good, all right.
So good Lord.
All right, we're getting a little sloppy here, I was scared out. All right, all those in favor? I think we have a motion and second.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, well, we'll see what we can pull together in the next couple of weeks here.
Chris, I have one more thing.
Yes, go ahead.
I would, I would like the, in light of everything that's going on right now with the water restrictions and the critical stages, and my limited understanding of, you know, the town has one tap point and we're allowed X number of gallons, we have the backup with East Hampton and because of that, we fall under them. Now, the critical shortage, and if you watch the news before the meeting tonight, locally within our area, the surface wells are drying up and it's the Argentine wells that you need to do and all this stuff. So I'd like to get some more information, I'd like to ask the Water Commission to provide us with information and their opinion as to whether or not we should be looking towards, moving towards, you know, worst-case scenario for us, a building mortuary in the town. If we can't, if we don't have enough water supply, what's going on right now, and, you know, the answer might be, well, let people drill their own wells, but, okay, but aren't we drawing from the same source? If we're doing, and I don't know the answers, but I'd like to start having the conversation before.
I think it's valid.
Things get farther.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, that's a valid point, okay.
There was a statewide drought call that I was on last week and it talked about the difficulty with low water, but also fire hazard and a lot of things. So, and I think they're setting up another one, so I don't know if you get those, but it was, yeah, it's critical. I also wonder about our messaging to the public, water restriction, check the website. Like, I don't know if there's more that we can provide as a drive-by, you know, like no watering during the day or, you know, whatever exactly it is, because I don't know how many people go home and then look up the, you know, the water restriction on the website.
Probably true.
Right, I, I agree with you.
The hard part of that is we're restricted to 90 seconds in.
Oh, I know.
For verbal portions, so.
I think the main thing is no watering during the day.
But it, so if, if everyone's amenable to it, I'd, I'd like to request that we have a special meeting, 60 minutes, joint session with the Water Commission, but have them, you know, come in in the first 15 minutes, educate us on, here's our capacity, here's where we are, you know, and all those points. And then have an open dialogue that can be shared with the public.
Okay. To have a special meeting outside of our normal schedule?
Yeah, for that one topic.
Yeah.
Was that referenced 60 minutes in length or the, you want to be on the news program with it 60 minutes?
Let's just start with our local television channel.
Who knows, we might make 60 minutes.
I'll have to bring my jacket.
Yeah, okay, now that's, that's a valid point. We'll take a look at that probably for September then.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, early September, we can maybe make that work.
But early September before, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, very good. All right, if nothing else, let's move on to old business. Yep. So the Senior Center Feasibility RFQ process update. Ed?
So the feasibility committee received five vendors who submitted proposals. They are current, the members are currently taking those RFQs and scoring them. They will, the feasibility committee is meeting again on Thursday at 12:30 and to go over those. They are to turn their scoring sheets into myself, who will take them and put them into a summary sheet. And from there, depending on the results, they may want, if there's a couple of vendors that are very close and at the top, they will probably want to schedule interviews with those engineering firms.
Okay, good, so we had five responses, so that's good.
Yes, they did. Well, I was, actually, if you look at it and actually look at the amount of reading you have to do in scoring with this, since there was, I think, 27 or 28 entities that asked for the documentation for the RFQ, I was happy that, you know, five is doable. If we, if we had gotten 12 or 15 back.
It took me more than half a day to go through them.
Yeah.
One of them was like 100 and something pages.
122 or something, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.[1760.11] Yeah, yeah. Okay, good. Well, that's moving along then. So that process in the next...
My guess is there's going to be a vote on Thursday to interview one or two firms.
Sounds good, okay.
And, I mean, they've done, all five companies have done a lot of senior community centers, municipal buildings, I mean, they're...
Good. All right. Okay, COVID-19 update. What do we know about anything? I know...
It's still out there in different, you know, variants. You know, it is still spreading. Fortunately, at least this time of year, a lot of the events or people gatherings are outdoors rather than, you know, indoors. So, you know, there's still booster vaccines that are available and, you know, from what they're talking about, probably this fall to wintertime, both FISA and Moderna are supposed to release a new vaccine that is supposed to be, shall we say, better against some of the newer variants, but we will see. I mean, it's still out there, it's still good to be cautious and, you know.
And Lord knows, we have plenty of test kits, so please.
So we talked about getting some out in the hallway there.
The Board of Health did have a plan to distribute them. They were at the Celebrate Southampton and I know they distributed a good amount of them. I forget what their other events were of how they were going to get them out. I'll try to make that Board of Health meeting tomorrow night and find out the rest of their plans.
Well, maybe a good idea to just put them out where people pay their taxes.
Yeah, we talked about having them right up by the tax, yeah, the little window there, where people come and pay their taxes. There could be a little stand or something there with at least, you know, just put out like 20 or something at a time and then if they're gone, then, you know.
On the other thing, the school going back into session, you might want to get a good supply into the schools.
Yeah.
The Inspiration Day conference.
Yeah, but they extended.
They were extended.
Extended along.
It's three months, but still.
Actually, some of them got extended up as long as six months.
Yeah, they were extended. There's a paper that goes along with the test kits. Do we still need, I'll ask them tomorrow, but I'm just wondering, what happens with these case tracing sheets that are in all the meetings? I mean, is that still necessary? I guess, I guess I'll ask that tomorrow.
Yeah, what's happening?
I don't, we don't have any, I mean, is case tracing still happening?
I don't believe so.
Yeah. Unless it's through that consortium model.
Maybe that way, yeah. But again, I think we're still in the same belt with, if people are self-testing, it's not being reported in a MAVEN, right? So chances are it's not. Okay, so everybody still be cautious and, you know, if you have a big event coming up, there are certainly plenty of free tests to avail yourselves of before you have to attend one, okay? Especially if it's an indoor event. All right, East Street Bridge, looks like things are moving along. I saw something that said the date of 2022 in cement there, so it's gotta, it's gotta happen.
Yeah, I couldn't resist taking a photo of that close up, so. And we did get a, things are moving forward, we're getting closer to the end. And I did get a updated schedule of tasks and timetable to the bridge completion today. So, the week of August 15th, they'll be stripping forms, rubbing concrete, installing bridge railing, prep for the full-depth road box. The week of August 22nd, finish concrete form stripping and seal the bridge joints. The week of August 29th, doing the deck membrane, pave the base and binder. The week of September 6th, we'll be working on the guardrail, the sidewalks and the granite curbing. The week of September 12th, landscaping, millings under the guardrail and final paving. The week of September 19th, bridge joints. The week of September 26th, final striping and punch list items. And I've got October 3rd, 2022 as the bridge anticipated opening date.
Wow. Wow, that's great.
That's all happening.
I like hearing that organized schedule.
It took a month to get it.
Yeah, no, nonetheless.
I've sent it along to Randall for his comments on it and once he's commented on it, we'll be replacing what is on our website with this update for everybody.
What would be between the sidewalk and the road? Will there be anything that separates the road from the sidewalk?
My guess is it's a curbing, but I could be wrong, from some of the, whether you call them safe streets or updates I have seen done in other areas.
Great, okay. Glad to hear that's moving along. That's wonderful. Okay. All right, voiceover IP, I think you had put that, it was in the quarterly report.
It was, but just to tantalize everybody.
Show and tell, all right.
And I did sign some more forms today for them to move this forward, so, basically. Nick, I didn't plug the cord in there, it's not wired.
We're not that technologically smart.
So everyone calling the town hall will call into a one-number system?
No, we still have the separate numbers. However, if you call into my office and or the town clerk's office, which seem to be the two that are the central locations for everybody, and you have a question of whether you, how do you pay your tax bill or how do you file an abatement?
You can transfer it right to Treasury.
We can now transfer it right to them. We don't have to say, geez, I'm sorry, you got to dial that directory direct. You know, the other pieces, they all have voicemail to them, so you get the office, you can leave a voicemail, the voicemails can be retrieved remotely.
Is the handset portable?
Is the handset portable? No.
No, it has a cord. I heard you say cord, but I was also thinking, could it function? No.
No.
So a question on the voicemails. So when they call in, they leave a voicemail, it's going to leave a recording, I think you just said, right? And you can retrieve the recording remotely.
Remotely, correct.
Will it also take that recording and email it? As most voics do.
It has that potential. I am not going down that road and do not recommend going down the road because of the retention laws.
Well, they probably match email retentions, but it would create a permanent record within the department.
Correct.
Town email accounts.
However, it's something else you have to retain and follow the Freedom of Information laws on.
It's like recording the call and you'd have to tell the person that you're doing it.
No, well, no. So you leave a message on their voicemail, you'll get an email with the recording there saying, here it is. But once, to Ed's point, once that become, that then is now a public document, so.
And you got to store them.
Not that anybody would do it here, but it's like, oh, no, they never called, they never called. Well, if you go back and you do a search and be like, well, here are the 14 messages.
Yeah.
There's pros and cons.
It's another record management situation that might be another...
And there's also two conference phones, one for this room and one for upstairs?
We don't have those yet. Those are being supplied by Valley.
But there will be.
But there will be.
But yes, they are supplying those. These are the ones that can't, that need to be programmed by TPS.
So when will these be in and used?
The next thing we'll have to do is find out from them when they'll actually be ready and then we're going to have to schedule a time for both training for everyone and a date that actually everyone's available, that they can come in and switch all these out in one day.
Yeah, go live, yeah. Great. All right.
So like I say, I'm still, I'm guessing, and it might not be a great timeframe for everybody to be here, but I'm still guessing the availability will be around the end of August, beginning of September.
Okay. All right, moving on. No PCFs tonight. We do, however, have three permits licenses here. We have, do you want to take these one by one or all together?
All together.
All right. Would you like to read the three of them, Rainey?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve three license permits for using corner park. The first is Brigitte Titchey and Alex Touche, September 3rd. Jack and Jill. Alice Bettaker, and that's September 24th, Jack and Jill picnic. And then Karen Porter, and that's September 25th, and that's a birthday celebration. And it looks like all the paperwork is complete.
Second.
All right, any discussion about that? It's interesting, we're getting quite a few people that are coming to use the park that are not necessarily town residents, although one of these definitely is. Two of them are, I guess, yeah, there's one outside, but.
But there has been a run of out of town people.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for these three license permits. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, no opposed. Motion passes, okay. Other documents requiring signature, so we do need to sign off on the wage sheets. And then, Ed, you have another document here for the loader acquisition contract for the highway department, if you want to talk to us about that a little bit.
Sure. We have the actual contract to order that loader from United Construction and Forestry. It's a John Deere. This total after the $25,000 trade-in for the loader would be $221,465. Purchase price before that trade-in was $246,465 and it's purchased through a cooperative purchasing agreement through Source Wealth, which we belong to.
Can you just remind me what the authorized dollar limit was?
It was $231.
$231, okay.
So that was one of my questions. I think the motion, I looked back and looked at it, it said $231 or any other amount. So we're fine with this being more than that?
It's actually less than. $221 is the actual.
Right, but that's actually, the trade-in was 25, but it's $246, so it's actually more than the $231.
Semantics, your perception. It is less than $231. We are...
Well, I remember why we stuck with $231, because we didn't want to build in the $25,000 discount in case the number came out higher.
I'm just asking if the language from the, you know, like this is consistent with the language from the town meeting?
Yes, that is the language that we got from bond counsel on this.
I have another question. Under five, is it realistic, given how long it took to get the last piece of equipment, is it realistic that it would be here by December 31st, 2022?
If it's not, then I have to do an addendum to this to extend the date.
But they represented that they can meet that deadline, at least right now.
Well, once they sign it, they do, yes. And this is based on some that they expected to get into for stock.
Okay, all right.
And at least these type of ones aren't like some of the dump trucks or the other trucks where you get the bodies in and the, or the chassis and the cabs in and you have to build the rest of the truck for the body.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions on this? Do we have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract and general conditions as presented to us for a total cost of $221,465, which includes the $25,000 trade-in on the quote dated 8/10/2022 with United Construction and Forestry.
I'll second it.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
No opposed, everybody passes this one. All right, very good. And next we have some minutes to approve. May 3rd and June 7th. Should we take these one by one? Did anybody see some?
I actually did not see any edits. I made a motion to approve the minutes of May 3rd. You want to do them together? I'll go ahead and add to that some minutes of June 7th.
June 7th, okay. Anybody, okay, could we have a second first?
Second.
Any, any discussion? Do we have any, any issues, any typos? No? All right, then if not, could I have a motion? We have the motion. Could we have a vote, please? All those in favor of both sets of minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. They are approved. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, catching up on those. Now, a few pending items. What would you like to talk to us about on that pending list there, Ed? Clearwater, anything happening?
Are we voting on the other minutes that are in there or no?
Those are executive session.
So we don't?
We approve them in executive session. Old Town Hall, I know, is under our ARPA discussion that we're going to look at a statement of work that we're working on to get the work done on the painting and woodworking on the old town hall, i.e. police station. Any news on Clearwater boundary from the Veegle people?
I actually got an email back from Rob Kane today and he let me know that they are acceptable to that. However, they did want to ask if we would be all right and I'll have, would have to also add, ask Kestrel if a clause could be added to that license that said that Southampton residents should not climb or jump over the fence from our property to theirs.
Okay.
Which, I mean, I would be fine with, it kind of makes some sense today.
I mean, climbing over the part that's fallen down?
Climb over onto our own property?
Do they know some of that fence is like not...
Hey, whatever, whatever makes them happy. Let's do it and be done with it so we can get it off the agenda.
As long as the Select Board's okay with that, like I say, it seems like a fairly reasonable request, but I will also reach out to Kestrel.
Yeah, and just have them.
As you hold the CR.
Yeah, okay. Maybe they need to, you know, put something in writing too that they're okay with it, just so that we have that.
They would have to sign.
Oh, they've got to sign on that letter too, yeah, okay.
I don't know if their insurance vendor had anything to do with them finally getting back to me or not. I appreciate any help, I appreciate any help that came our way in finally getting that answer.
Perfect, okay. Good, all right. Anything, we're going to, we will pick up, Rainey, the Green Community Grant next time around. Anything on the East Street tip proposal?
That will be on hold for a while. I have asked them if they would come in sometime at one of the September meetings and actually do an update on the whole process to the Select Boards.
Have VHB come in?
VHB, correct.
Okay, good, all right, yeah, we've got. Some things in the merks there, okay. And we have a couple of other things that we've added to our pending items for next time and so we'll get them on the agenda for our next meeting around. Good. So we have decided on our calendar of our next meeting, so then we will have an executive session tonight. So at this point in time, could we have, let's see, I guess I need to do a reading here first of, which one? The executive session, okay. The board is going to be adjourning and going into executive session per MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And MGL Chapter 30A 21A 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal granting aid requirements. Approval of executive session minutes, March 8, 2022, April 12, 2022.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All those in favor?
Lumber, aye.
Aye. Tishman, aye. Roden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Falls, aye. Okay.
Do we need the actual motion?
The chair.
I did, basically, as I read it, I guess. I sort of did it, yes. All right, so we are officially adjourned at about 9:42-ish, thereabouts, and we'll be back. Let's take about a five-minute break and come back for executive session.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.